Joining us on on what's a beautiful night, it's a little bit overcast now, but thanks for joining us here. We'll just get started in a, in a few minutes or a few moments. Sorry. Okay. And whoever's on for St. John Energy you don't show is muted. So if you could please just mute your line for us. And common clerk, whenever you're ready to go, we'll, we'll get served. Mr. Evans, are we live streaming? Just while we're waiting for the common clerk, just want to say, um, there seems to be over the last meeting or two, um, uh, increased interest in our council meetings. Thank you. Um, lots of interest online. I see people are reading the documents, asking questions about items in the kit, uh, making suggestions about, uh, watch parties and groups, uh, to watch council. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Um, we, we know people watch on Rogers. We know people watch online and, uh, we do appreciate you, uh, tuning in. Uh, this is your city. So the more engaged you become in your city, the better and brighter our future will be. So thank you. Common clerk, are you ready to go?
Uh, yes, Your Worship.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll call the meeting to order. Still having quite a bit of echo.
Uh, just one moment.
Thanks. Mr. Evans, is there a way to tell, you know, somehow sometimes we're signed in multiple times? Is there a way for you to tell if one of us is, is signed in twice? Please, yeah. My computer was doing something a bit funny tonight as well when I signed in, so. Okay. 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 Common clerk, we'll try it again.
Okay.
We'll call the meeting to order, sir.
Uh, Your Worship. Go now. Sorry about the technical difficulty.
No problem. First item, please.
The first item is 2.1 on the agenda and it's July 6th minutes council.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by the deputy mayor. Thank you. Seconded by councillor McKenzie. Thank you. And, uh, on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by showing a hand. Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay. Thank you. Not seeing or hearing anyone. Next item, please.
And next item, minutes of July 20th.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moved again by the deputy, seconded again by councillor McKenzie. Thank you. And on that question, uh, not seeing any, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? The motion is carried. Thank you. And the next item.
Item three is the approval of the agenda and there are two recommended additions. That would be 17.1 is a recommendation from committee of the whole. And it's a recommendation for appointments to city agencies, boards and commissions. And 17.2 would be, um, a recommendation with respect to the mayor's strategic advisor position.
Okay. Thank you. With that, can I have a mover for the agenda, please? Councillor Reardon, thank you. Seconded by councillor Merrithew. Thank you. And on the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Thank you. The motion is carried to approve the agenda. Next item.
Item four is disclosures of interest, conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you. Either by a show of hand or, or, uh, by voice, does anyone have a conflict of interest tonight with anything on the agenda? Okay. Not hearing or seeing anyone. Thank you. We'll move on. Next item.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you want to turn your mic on, perhaps you can move that for us.
Uh, move all the items in the consent agenda.
Five, one to five, 14.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by the deputies, seconded by councillor McKenzie. Thank you. Uh, on the consent agenda items. Thank you, councillor Reardon.
Your worship, I have a couple of questions. Um.
I see you, Sean. Thank you.
In five, one, there's four recommendations there. Can I only ask a question about land for public purposes? I was going to ask a question about the sidewalk.
Um, procedurally, uh.
I'm good with whatever.
Yeah. Well, actually I don't know. I don't know. I don't know the answer, councillor. So common clerk.
Uh, Your Worship, the, the only procedural relevant aspect of this is a councillor cannot vote against the consent agenda. So if there's no intention to vote against it, um, there's no rule respecting asking questions.
Okay. Thank you. Going five, one, there was, the recommendation number four was that, um, council amend its resolution, uh, by relieving the developer requirement to construct a concrete walkway. So I'm just wondering if anyone is there who wrote this, who can, um, address this for me as far as is, does the eight percent often cheaper for the developer than doing some of the work that might be required in the street than negate a sidewalk? I'm just curious with that. I'm not going to vote against that. I'm good with that.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, I think, is you going to answer or?
Yes, Your Worship. Uh, through you to the councillor, the requirement for the sidewalk was from a past subdivision layout in, uh, 2008 or 2009. Uh, and then there was a, a street immediately to the south of the parkland. Uh, just to the south of Boyana or Crescent and the developer, this uh, developer has a different concept. So based on that, uh, there's no need for a pedestrian connection there because we don't have a public street immediately south of, uh, the LPP land. Um, with respect to, you know, the initial portion of the question, you know, with what's cheaper land or money, it, it really depends on, um, you know, the value of the land. With the city's strategic plan for parkland, Play S J, we've gotten away from taking land and only take that in, you know, strategic instances because one of the, one of the findings of that study is that we're really land rich and, and I guess cash poor, for lack of a better term, in terms of developing that land. So taking the money gives us a bit more flexibility to, uh, meet the needs of the community in that regard.
Thank you. In five, two, with the, it's another LPP. When they split that land, does the variance for decreased parking, uh, and commercial parking spaces, does that still follow through with all of that?
Yes, the, uh, through you, Your Worship, to the councillor, uh, there was a variance that was issued early on when that building was constructed, uh, for reduction in parking and the intent of that variance is that particular use is very, um, space intensive as opposed to labor intensive. It's a large, uh, essentially a server farm, large building with a lot of computers in the back. So it's, you know, not a lot of, uh, staff required to run it, hence the variance. So, uh, you know, should there be any, you know, further increase in parking required, you know, staff could all, you know, they could pursue another variance and, you know, I think, you know, reasonably we would support that. But, um, you know, getting back to your question, it's not, uh, it's not really a labor intensive use of that site. So.
And then LPP, it says that, uh, we sort of, uh, we've got a little bit of a, I guess, a, um, the, the letter from the province says that we've got 464 square meters for $3,500, but the report says, I thought the reports had a different price. So is that the correct price for that?
In, in which item councillor, sorry?
Five, three.
Okay.
It's five, three. Maybe I have the wrong number.
Through Your Worship, I'm touring councillor.
Four, sorry. It's a, it's a purchase of a provincial surplus, five, four.
Right. Thank you. Um, so again, sorry councillor, your question was?
Uh, well, I just, I read, I read in the report that they, that they had gotten for a little bit cheaper, but I was looking, when I was looking at the letter from the province of New Brunswick, it said that the 464 square meters were assessed at 3,500. So is that the price that we're paying? Five, four. Purchase of two provincial surplus properties off Alma.
Mr. Fogan?
Yeah. Through You, Worship, to the councillor, yes, it is. That is the purchase price is the $3,500.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, and what about city land for sale? Five, nine, that's Curtis Langel. Oh, sorry. Okay. Five, nine, I'll go to Curtis Langel, I guess. That's the.
Uh, you, you get me now for that one. Curtis stood on vacation.
Okay. So that one. Oh, okay. That's the purchase of the land and that's the, and is, is that one the same as it's, uh, 700, I guess? For that land? I don't know what I was going to. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't write my question down about that. But meanwhile, I've got you on. I wanted, I did want to talk about the five, 14, which is the, uh, the strategic planning process. And, um, you know, I, I want to congratulate the city on the Navole process. I think that's so important. I've sat on a number of committees that have looked to do a strategic plan. And usually what we have to do is to hire someone who's done a strategic plan because you often don't know, uh, all the components that you should have to put together a strategic plan. So I think this is a, it's in the consent agenda, but it's a, it's excellent, I think, for the city to have. And so I just want to congratulate the city and you for your leadership with bringing that forward to the city. Um, can I ask a question about five, seven?
Sure.
Now going back to five, seven is this is the contract. So the engineer for the city states that this should cost about $870,000. But we're, I'm, I'm compelled to go when it's the low bidder, which is $686,000 versus the high bidder, which is $949,000. So I always have a struggle with this huge differential in being compelled to go with the lowest bidder because, um, I just find that worrisome, I guess, if our, if our staff believe that it should have cost X, but it's like it's a significant amount less. It's almost $200,000 less. So I don't know if there's anyone there.
Mr. McGovern? Mr. McGovern? Two pieces there, Mr. McGovern, I think. One is how do we arrive at the engineer's estimates? And then, and then the second piece is, um, how do you arrive at a satisfactory recommendation, perhaps, if I could summarize that one?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, yes, we, uh, have a team who reviews, uh, these, uh, when they come in to ensure that, uh, all prices and, um, and that all components of the project are covered. In this instance, uh, you know, when you look at the average of the four prices, uh, submitted by a tender, they average just over $800,000. Uh, and the engineer's estimate is, uh, is well within that, less than 10% off the average. So uh, there is, uh, there is a fair amount of variability. Um, and, uh, we, we do track, uh, performance of contractors and, uh, ensure that, uh, the prices that are being submitted reflect, you know, uh, positive experiences that we've had in the past. And we do have a, a recommendation that, uh, we do believe that, uh, the contractor has the the resources and the materials and the, and everything accounted for and the ability to complete the project. Well, under our budget, uh, and, and a lot of the times it has to do with, uh, the, uh, the amount of work that a contractor has on their plate in terms of how aggressively they'll go after work or not.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear because as you, I just want to let the public know, I'm compelled to go with the lowest bid. But it's great to hear all of the background that goes into this presentation for me to accept the lowest bid. That's not just a low bid, that there is some due diligence done in behind that as well. Thank you, breaks. That's it for questions for me. Thank you, Your Worship.
City manager. Thank you. Yep. City manager.
Your Worship, through you to the councillor, and I know the councillor understands this, but it's not that we are compelled to go with the lowest bid. We are compelled to go with the lowest qualified bid. And that's where that review happens of their track record, their competencies, their skill sets, et cetera. So, uh, Joe can't come along and put a bid in for 120,000 and we take it. It, it has to be a qualified bid and that's, that's where that determination and the analysis occurs by the staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Casey. You're next up.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I just had a question about, uh, five, three. Uh, I just wondering if we, if we looked at the concerns of the, of the letter we received in that?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Reed or who's taking that?
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. I'll be answering that question. Through you to councillor Casey, we did take into consideration any comments that we've received from, uh, neighboring, uh, landowners. Most of the issues that were raised had to do with, um, matters that were outside of the scope of this application, which was to determine whether or not to take land for public purposes or to, um, seek to have cash in lieu if a subdivision was to proceed. So the recommendation before you from P A C is for cash in lieu. And Mr. Reed's mentioned our longstanding policy as to why we take cash in lieu in these areas.
And thanks. And, uh, five, four, um, it says we're, we're getting, we're buying this for, uh, because we have municipal infrastructure. What infrastructure do we have? It's in a weird spot. Uh, it's not at the corner of a, of a street or anything.
Mr. Fogan, are you taking that one or Mr. McGovern?
Uh, I think it's probably Mr. McGovern.
Okay. Thank you. Um, somebody is eating or something and we're hearing it. So maybe some, if you're not muted and not speaking, please mute. Mr. McGovern.
Your Worship, uh, thank you. Through you to councillor, uh, we do have two pieces of infrastructure that actually cross through that parcel of land. One, that is a storm sewer and one that is a sanitary sewer and where this is an opportunity provided to us by the province to, uh, acquire this land at, uh, at a discounted rate. We are making the recommendation to pursue it as we currently do not have easements on that land and it will be necessary for us to have, uh, the ability to access this in the future as we do maintenance on it.
And in the, in the future, is it? Would it be pruned to divest of this land to, to move the infrastructure?
Through you, Your Worship, uh, this city has no plans to, uh, relocate this infrastructure. It isn't as old as a lot of the other infrastructure we have in the city. So in the, for the foreseeable future, the plan would be to, uh, keep the infrastructure where it is as it would come at a significant cost to relocate it.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Um, sorry, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Worship. I just have a couple of quick questions on, I don't have the number of it, but on the notice of motion for borrowing, the $25 million that's being borrowed for St. John Energy, does that go on the city's debt? Or when we have to discuss our debt? Uh, or, or list it publicly? Is that separate from the total that the city would owe?
Could, could we also explore? Thank you, deputy. Could we also just explain, uh, that document, city manager? I'm not sure who's going to do and answer that question, but just maybe a bit of an explanation on where we are in the process tonight.
I think we're going to do a two-pronged answer to that question. First I'll have the CFO speak about what exactly is before you this evening. It's the first step in a, uh, a multi-step process. And then I'd also ask the city solicitor to make comments about, uh, St. John Energy and its potential borrowing of money. If all.
Thank you.
Through you, Your Worship, uh, exactly right. This is really a procedural matter this evening. First of all, the debentures of the city of St. John issues is through the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation, agency of the province. That corporation would negotiate, uh, bond issuances for all municipalities in New Brunswick. And so every year, the corp, the municipal finance corporation sends out, uh, letters to municipalities across New Brunswick. Normally in February and August, so it's twice a year, asking what, uh, your demand is for borrowing any particular year. So it's a three-step process. The first step is just to provide proof that your council has been given notice. So we're, we're required to provide proof to the province that we've provided council a 30-day notice of our intention to borrow. So tonight, there's no approval by council required. It's really a receive and file. It's just a, it allows us to get in the queue with the province to borrow. Uh, at the end of 30 days, uh, we will bring back another report to council, uh, with an application and a request for approval from council, uh, to actually proceed with borrowing within a set, uh, range of terms for that borrowing. So tonight it's procedural, but we will be back in September, uh, with an actual request for an approval.
But even so, that's fine, but if they get approval and I ask you if that amount of money is added on the total of the city debt? Or is it always separate? Like when you have to declare how much money the city owes, um, to anyone in a report public? Would it identify that that amount of money was really borrowed by, for St. John Energy?
Um, I guess I'll answer that question in two different ways. Given St. John Energy was established by resolution of council, any debt that St. John Energy levers, uh, there, there obviously be exposure of, of that debt to the city of St. John. In terms of the way we financial report, you won't see their debt on our financial statements. It's reported differently for St. John Energy because they're considered a separate type of entity. Um, so when you see the amount of debt in, for instance, on our consolidated statements this evening, uh, you won't see St. John Energy's, um, debt on that statement. They don't have any long-term debt right now anyhow, other than a shared risk pension plan obligation. Uh, but when they do have debt, you won't see that on our audited financial statements. But we would be exposed from a liability perspective with any debt issued by St. John Energy.
Thank you. Uh, are we finished with that, Your Worship? I have another one on a different item. I think, did the city manager want to speak on this also?
Forgive me, Your Worship. I just want to check with the city solicitor to see if he has anything he needs to add for this evening, understanding it's coming back in a month to council or so. City Solicitor.
Good evening, Your Worship and, uh, members of council. It, just in order to avoid any misunderstanding, uh, with respect to the borrowing associated with the projects of St. John Energy, I would advise that, um, in addition to a subsequent resolution that will actually, um, authorize the issuance of the, um, debenture in the fashion that the, that the, um, commissioner of finance has described, there will also be a requirement, especially with the, uh, Virchill interconnection project, for council to approve a resolution that substantial major expansion to the energy infrastructure, which, uh, the city has entrusted to St. John Energy. So there will be, that item will be back before council for, uh, specific approval in addition to the authorization of, of a debenture to support the borrowing for the province.
You're unmuted, Your Worship. Deputy, you had another question?
Well, I mentioned this at the growth committee. I, I just maybe thought maybe that we could explain it a little bit better to the public for the strategic planning, uh, plan for the 10 years. Uh, I'm hopeful, I mentioned it at the growth committee that, you know, I'm hopeful that the people that are on the steering committee and as it's reported back to council from time to time, that we keep it as, um, a realistic plan for the city. Like I, I think in the past, we've had plans that sometimes we, we put our dreams in it or the dreams of the people that have written the plan and, and sometimes, uh, later in years, we can't come up to that dream, like, you know? And it makes it difficult for, uh, people moving forward, you know? That's where the idea came that at one time the city of St. John would have over 200 and some thousand, um, citizens and, uh, you know, then you feel or people feel you failed. So I like to put plans in place that we know that hopefully we can make that plan come true because I think they're easier to work with and, and because I think that one thing that we want for this plan is that it's a plan that's going to be dealt with, that we're going to be able to work with and not something that's put on the shelf somewhere because a number of years ago, the city did, uh, what they call a vision 2015 plan. I don't know if anything really came from it. I mean, a lot of people put a lot of, um, time in it and money, but I'm hoping that this plan, uh, really does something for the city for the next 10 years. It's something for the city to be guided by and, but I want it to be realistic enough that we all can live with it and, uh, you know, be able to go along with it. The other thing I'm hoping that when the citizens are, um, placed on that, uh, steering committee, that they're from different areas of the city, if possible, you know, that they have different ideas and so forth to come into play. So I know that, uh, at the time when I said this at the growth committee, I think, uh, either you or the, or the city manager had some remarks to make so that everybody knows what this is really all about because this is very important for the next 10 years and, and it's great to have something that we're working on that we hope that we'll be able to all bring together and, and really be able to look forward to it. So I just wanted to bring that up. I wanted to be realistic about it.
Yep. Thank you, deputy, uh, Mr. Fogan or city manager in, in, uh, in 30 seconds. It's a good point that deputies made. Uh, no one wants a plan that's going to go on the shelf. How is this one going to be different, um, than, than, and not, the past is the past. Moving forward, how is the strategic plan going to, uh, inform our decisions and how are we going to, going to keep it alive? City manager, Mr. City Manager?
Your Worship, in, in 30 seconds or less, first of all, I fully agree with the deputy mayor. Uh, my phrase is a plan and vision without resources is nothing but a hallucination. So this plan must fit within our allotted resources. Otherwise, it's not worth the paper it is written on. The entire staff is conscious of that and certainly we will be making that point as we go through the public engagement as well. How is this plan different from other plans? First of all, there will be extensive public consultation. Uh, there will be a steering committee that is, consists not only of members of council, but of members of the public. Those people that we are putting on this are focused on a 10-year outlook, not a 50-year outlook because nobody can predict that far in advance. And the plan will be reviewed on a yearly basis and adjusted so that it remains relevant as we work through the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, uh, city manager, can you just very quickly speak to five point six? I think, uh, that is the, uh, TD Station Harbor Station Commission. I think you just wanted to let the public know a quick item on that.
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, at the last council meeting, I was asked the question, uh, where was the TD Commission's, uh, annual report because it was missing from the packages? And at that point in time, I mentioned that we had not received it. Uh, that was an error. We had received it. It simply got lost in the shuffle of paperwork. Uh, so I do apologize, uh, with the implication that we had not received the report. We in fact did and that it is, that is why it is part of the consent agenda this evening.
Okay. Thank you. And just, uh, not to, not, not annual report, but their, their update.
Their, their, yeah, sorry. Their, their bi-annual update.
Which is, which is council's current governance structure. So, okay. Thank you. And then, uh, sorry, I know our public hearings are supposed to start now, but just one more minute, two more minutes. Five, 11, um, I guess, uh, to you, councillor Merrithew, as chair of our finance committee or our, our commissioner of finance, that represents a massive amount of work, those 2019 financial statements. Did you just have a couple of comments for the public? Mr. Chairman?
Very, very high, uh, level comments. I'll ask Mr. Fogan if he has comments. And second, excuse me, please. Again, 2019, the city of St. John balanced the budget. Very clean audit from a highly respected national firm. And, uh, as you said, a ton of work's put into it. Very proud of our people. Thank you. Mr. Fogan, do you have anything further?
Uh, nothing further, Ed, uh, councillor Merrithew, other than, uh, Mr. Stephen Lund from the Audit Room Lloyd is on here this evening. If council didn't have any questions, but just to reiterate, uh, it was, it was a good audit, good work in relation to Lloyd. Uh, we, we attempted last year, I know these are very complex statements. And we made an attempt this year to put, uh, an infographic in your kit that pretty much summarizes a, a very complex, long set of statements on one page. Main themes of the, of the, uh, of the results for the year. So, uh, with that, I encourage everyone to take a look at that. And if there's any questions for Mr. Lund, uh, I'm sure he'd be more, more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, very much, uh, commissioner, uh, for your leadership, your team. Uh, this is the infographic, everyone that's, uh, we'll make sure to share that out tonight after the meeting. Uh, it is, as you say, 15 different entities coming into one set of statements and, uh, a shout out to, uh, to those engaged citizens as well. They asked me where the statements were after finance. We shared that out and, uh, there's a lot more folks that are asking great questions about, uh, their city. Uh, so thank you very much for that. I would just say, uh, very quickly, hundreds, if not thousands of hours represented of work in, in those items in the consent agenda tonight. Uh, really, uh, great work happening here at the city. It doesn't happen without, uh, our internal staff and our external partners. Um, and really, really exciting. I think I'm. I think a number of those items were highlighted tonight, whether it be consolidated financial statements or it be the strategic planning process uh or or uh, you know, move moving some uh land projects ahead. Uh, they are, they appear in that part of the agenda, but there is a massive amount of work that happens and I I think it's illustrative of the the work that our staff are doing here at the city of St. John. I just want to say thank you. So, okay, so with that, the consent agenda is on. We've answered lots of questions and I'll call the question now. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Thank you, the motion is carried. Okay, and we will skip through our public hearings, common clerk.
Uh, yes, that's correct, your worship. Uh, we've advertised for 6:30, our public hearings. Uh, the first one on the agenda is 9.1, and this is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for number 90 Paradise Row. Uh, in your kit, you'll see a PAC report which recommends the rezoning. And there is a staff presentation before the public hearing begins. And Mr. Willett, deputy commissioner, will introduce this.
Perfect, just before we go there, Mr. Willett, I deputy commissioner and acting commissioner this week. Uh, thank you for that. Just want to explain to the public that in our new um uh COVID world of online meetings, we do invite those that are wishing to speak uh either against or in favor of uh of a project or of a public hearing rezoning in this case. And tonight, we have no one registered to speak against this particular item. And we do have uh three uh, three parties, as I understand it, wishing to speak in favor. And as you said, common clerk, first we'll hear from our uh acting commissioner and we'll have a staff report. So over to you, Mr. Willett.
Thank you and through you, your worship. Good evening uh to all members of council. Tonight is the first of two public hearings in the month of August. This has come about because of a significant volume of planning applications which have been received and which represents a significant level of investment in our community. The growth and community development team has worked very hard to facilitate these applications through the process and to deal with the high volume of applications through the one stop development shop. The first public hearing this evening is an application made on behalf of the St. John Energy to rezone a site at 90 Paradise Road to facilitate a new power station for the central peninsula. This investment in public infrastructure will enable the central peninsula uh peninsula's uh energy needs for years to come and replace an aging and soon obsolete substation. Council may recall that this application was originally to be before you uh, the council in March. However, the applicant had requested delay the work to refine their proposal because of public feedback. That reworked proposal is before you this evening for your consideration and endorsed by the planning advisory committee. To walk through the application process and to and and to go through the details, I'll turn things over to Ken Malonson, our manager of community planning.
Uh, good evening, your worship, members of council. Also joining me this evening is uh Mark O'Hearn, who was the staff planner for the application. I'll just share my presentation here. Uh, this item involves the property at 90 Paradise Row. St. John Energy is seeking permission to construct a new substation uh in order to decommission the existing facility at 23 Smythe Street here. The application involves rezoning portions of 90 Paradise Row and then subdividing it into two lots. The new substation would be built on lot 20 dash one, which you can see with the X, while an existing commercial building would be on lot 20 dash two. Application has undergone some revision since it was before you asked. This is a look at the original proposal. Uh, based on public feedback, revised renderings have been submitted now, proposing a smaller substation that is further from residential um development. And um, I should say further from residential land uses and does not include tall transmission circuits and lines. The site is located on the south side of Paradise Row, adjacent to St. John Thruway. Adjacent commercial buildings and a residential, multi residential building are located on the north side. So those buildings are located here with the multi. The application um presents a significant growth opportunity for the city to deliver transformational change in the long work area, achieving the city's municipal plan and recently adopted central peninsula goals. High community benefits are associated with the proposal and these are discussed in more detail in the staff report. St. John Energy will provide council more details on the site selection process. But as you can see here, there were a number of sites considered and the goal was to do the least amount of impact to adjacent um residential land uses. Municipal plan designation permits public utilities in the uh in the designation noted. Policies LU 128, 129, and 130 support the application. Proposed rezoning is mainly to utility service. However, a small portion of a former road right which you can see noted here will also need to be rezoned to commercial corridor and for some reason was not rezoned in the street closure process. Immediate area is comprised of three developed properties, two commercial, which I mentioned before, being 44 and 73 meters away, one condo building over 55 meters from the subject site, separated by a four lane arterial street. St. John Energy proposed to install a wall along Paradise Row and portions of the east west sides of the substation. The wall would have a minimum height of 2.44 meters to provide uh screening to adjacent developer. Conditions are proposed and included in the staff report. St. John Energy is proposing landscaping to the wall area along Paradise Row and conditions related to that are also included in your package. St. John Energy will use the latest technology to construct their substation to meet current and future demands. Any noise hum associated with the type of use in this tip is typically as a result of aging the infrastructure. Day traffic volumes and noise from the St. John Thruway should mask any minor noise hum on the site. At night, the separating distance will help provide further noise reductions. St. John Energy is also proposing sound barrier absorber materials within the wall construction to further assist with noise and conditions related to that are proposed. The periodic inspection of St. John Air's Energy Site will occur uh when the substation becomes operational and as a result, traffic impacts should be minimal. There's been a lot of concern regarding the visual impact of new transmission lines along Paradise Row. The revised proposal appears to have addressed this concern. The site is a major, or I should say this site is in a major transportation and commercial corridor next to a low density urban neighborhood. 90 Paradise Row is an appropriate location for this substation. St. John Energy held an open house uh February 26th of this year, which was supported by Develop St. John. Most of the attendees were from the residential building at 10 Millage Avenue, as I mentioned earlier. On July 8th, staff sent letters to property owners within 100 meters as per PAC process. On July 10th, the public notice was posted. Four emails were received and one member of the public spoke in favor of the application at PAC. Your worship and members of council, both staff and PAC recommend to common council that the site be rezoned in order to facilitate the proposed development. Showing here is a note and as noted uh in the PAC letter, PAC is recommending some minor condition changes to take into account the revised proposal. There's a list of the conditions that were amended as noted. And finally, staff and PAC are recommending the council accept money and move the land of public purposes for proposed subdivision. That concludes the presentation. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Not a question for you, Mr. Malonson. At this stage, we'll come back uh to you afterward, but just a perhaps a point of clarification, I think I heard you say that those that attended were mostly from a residential building at 10 Millage Avenue. Did I hear that correct or did I miss mishear that?
Your worship, I may have gotten the uh the address wrong here. Let me just have it.
It's Millage Street.
No, that's true.
Yes.
It's South Paradise.
Through your worship, it's the adjacent residential building you talked about throughout the presentation.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So we'll come back to staff uh afterward, folks. So again, um, my understanding is the uh the opportunity for those to speak against this rezoning was offered and that we have no one registered here uh to speak in opposition. I am correct in that, common clerk?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to those wishing to speak in favor of this uh rezoning. And I understand that we have uh representatives from Develop St. John to speak uh first, if that's correct. And if you are attempting to speak, you are perhaps muted.
We have Jeff Seer as the listed speaker for Discover St. John.
I think Mr. Seer is. Hi, sir, you are you there, Develop St.? Go ahead.
It's Rick Turner.
Well, not not yet, uh, Mr. Turner, I understand you're going to.
Your worship?
Yeah.
Uh, it's my understanding Develop St. John have made a submission, which is in your uh council kits. They will might be speaking this evening, but the information has been filed for council.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So uh, if you're there, then uh, Mr. Turner, are you kicking us off? Or I understood St. John Energy was also wishing to speak.
Yes, uh, uh, your worship, uh, members of common council, Rick Turner with Hugh Surveys and Consultants on behalf of it, St. John Energy uh at St. John Energy's office. Also in attendance is Dana Young, who is the asset manager for St. John Energy. He will be doing a presentation right after I finish up here. Uh, also, if there are technical questions that come up, we have the manager of engineering for St. John Energy here, Andrew O'Hearn, and Bob Garland, who is with Engineering Operations of New Brunswick Power, is also in attendance here at the uh St. John Energy offices. Uh, your worship, we're in agreement with the staff recommendation, which was unanimously passed by planning advisory with some minor clarifications to wording. Um, if you bear with me for a few minutes, uh, we have a short video that we'd like to show before Mr. Young's presentation. Uh, I think it'll help put things into perspective. We will have to just share screen if that can be uh.
I can share that now.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can see that, thank you.
See that, okay?
Yes.
Uh, this building is the uh uh building right across from Bernans that was recent recently refurbished. Uh, it's, it exists, the concrete, the concrete block wall along the front edge. Uh, they are things that are in existence. Uh, this video is going to take you through a simulation of what this is uh to be looking like once developed. This would be proceeding westerly along Paradise Row. And what you can see there, the retaining walls extended and there's an acoustical wall actually uh to be assembled on top of that. Uh, you can see the landscaping that's proposed and the transmission facilities to go in there uh as far as the bringing power to the site uh have been reduced quite substantially from what was previously proposed. The entrance to the site, uh, just by that red vehicle, that was moved to there. At first, we had it as a gate going into the middle of the site. Uh, by moving that, it's just less disruptive and gives a better sense of appearance uh as you go by the facility. At this point, we're moving up to approximately the uh fourth floor of the apartment building, building at Millage Street. Uh, this is what you'll see of the uh of the facilities once constructed. Uh, the site's been raised up, which helps the uh block some of the infrastructure inside the enclosure. And uh, what what's highlighted in that is the landscape. Now, there's, but this is from the end of the building where there's some units at that end that could look in this direction, but primarily that building, the, this is the direction that it points in. And this is really the viewpoint plane that people in that building enjoy, all people. Uh, some of them in that building wouldn't uh really see the proposed substation. Now, we're moving past the building up towards the hill and behind a cabin hog court. That's the Royal Page Building just in the middle. And you can see the substation across the street from it, uh Harbor Station in the background. Uh, the trees are quite significant, as you can see, and I'll get to that a little further on. Uh, the residents at the top of that hill, there's about eight or eight or nine townhouses. Again, they share the same kind of uh view of the cityscape and the harbor. Now, to help put it in overall context, this is going up to, say, the thousand foot level and overviewing the site. You can see Harbor Station in the background. Uh, the access ramp off of the viaduct is to the right and the building that St. John Energy intend to acquire is to the left and then a vacant strip of land. In the foreground, that's the Royal Trust, the Royal Page Building in Bernans. And as you get down to this level, this is where the townhouses would be and these are trees that somewhat obscure the view during the summer. This is looking at the facility from uh another direction, looking at it westerly and then we're going to be looking northerly. Uh, you see the substation proposal in the middle. Uh, the apartment building at right here, that's on Millage Street. You've got a commercial building here. You've got Bernans. And then there's this escarpment. The escarpment, as you can see, uh rises quite dramatically. So all the area in behind. Are you looking at that there? No, okay. Okay, you can see the area in behind that escarpment where the townhouses are at the top of the hill. It really takes and obscures the the visual of the substation from that whole community north of the area. So this is just continuing a little bit of a roundabout to see where it is again. It's quite an isolated area compared to the hog density. Um, big there buildings and stuff that you see around it. In uh in closing, St. John Energy has done an outstanding job of choosing the right site for the development and certainly have gone to great lengths to address concerns of residents. And uh, from there, if there's any questions, I could certainly try to address them or we can put Mr. Young forward as the next speaker presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Maybe we could stop sharing that screen so I can see if there are any questions. Thank you for that move, for the uh animation, very, very helpful. And, okay, perfect, council on Mr. Turner's comments or questions? Are there any uh, are there any questions on Mr. Turner's presentation? Uh, thank you, deputy mayor.
Well, I can ask a question here. Um, when I looked at all the pictures, um, it looked as if you're, you have a driveway in and it goes all around the facility and then out. Is that, am I seeing it right? Like that you have a uh sort of like a circular driveway around the whole facility?
The driveway comes in and does circle around to the rear of the substation. The intention of that was so that there's uh an uninterrupted uninterrupted uh landscaped area and wall along the the front of the uh facility where most, most people will see visually. Uh, they will be also acquiring, uh, if this is approved, they'll also be acquiring that building that was at the start of the video. That building uh will be used by St. John Energy during the construction of the facility. Uh, longer range plans, I'll let Mr. Young uh comment on that if there's any questions. But they will be utilized in the entire its site, including that building.
Will those, the driveway going in, will that nor- Will those, the driveway going in, will that normally be gated? Like, will that be close to public access, except when people are going into that need to be there?
It would be gated towards the back, not right at Paradise Row. Again, they want to have a nice appearance there, keep it landscaped, and gates there wouldn't give that sense of appeal.
And I just have one other question, and maybe I should wait to St. John Energy for then, but I can ask it, like, I think the main concern with the people from Millage Street is what they're going to see on top of the building. And, you know, I could see some stuff on top of the building. I'd just like somebody to sort of explain to what, like, how much stuff will be on top of the building, or like, it won't be any sort of rusty or not well-kept looking up here. It's like, you know, they won't be able to see down on top of the building. I don't think it's going to construct or interrupt their view, but I just want to have maybe, if somebody before the end of the session can just talk about what's on top of the building and what it looks like, so that people that have to look at it, we know what it's all about, if I may. And you don't have to do it right now, you can wait until after St. John Energy's presentation.
Yeah, through your worship, yes, the site is going to be a substation. The only building will be the existing building. The substation will be beside that, built at ground level, but it will be obscured from view by the wall that's being constructed around that, and by chain link fence at the rear with the privacy slats.
There's nothing up top that people will look at that will, they'll be able to say, my goodness, that looks so awful when I look out the window, like, like, you know, there's the poles going up with the wires, that, the transmitters or whatever you call them, that they'll be there.
Yeah, through your worship, in St. John Energy's presentations, they will highlight some things on that, the steps that have been taken.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you, your worship. I guess kind of along the same lines as the deputy's question. I know throughout this process, there were certain compromises that were made. Certainly, the main issues are coming from the Millage Street residents. Can you just briefly highlight the, those compromises that were made, and just where the projects come from, I guess?
Yes, through you, your worship, that would be best to defer that to Mr. Young's presentation.
Okay, happy to wait, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for Mr. Turner specifically? Okay, not seeing anyone, Mr. Turner, thank you. So the next presenter.
Good evening, your worship, Dana Young, manager of asset management for St. John Energy. Mr. Malatson, were you going to share our slide? Your worship, thank you for the opportunity to present St. John Energy's application on that Paradise Row. Next slide, Mr. Malatson. St. John Energy's application for rezoning. In just a summary, St. John Energy is proposing to construct a new substation on the southwest portion of the property at ninety Paradise Row. This will require the substation site to be rezoned from corridor commercial to utility service. New substation will replace a long-existing substation at twenty-three Spike Street, also known as Union Street Substation. The application also involves rezoning of an unzoned northeastern portion of the property to corridor commercial. St. John Energy is also seeking permission to subdivide the property, allowing in lieu of land for public purposes, dedication is recommended. This will plan supports the proposal. On the right-hand side of that slide, it introduces the new design of our substation that we have discussed at the beginning. I'll get further into that very end of my presentation, go in detail. Next slide, please. A little bit about us, I won't go long into this because I'm sure Council knows St. John Energy very well. Incorporated nineteen-twenty-two, left the distribution utility, owned by the City of St. John, to service residents upon the municipal boundary. Currently, we have thirteen substations and a comprehensive distribution system, mainly along the roadway. Next slide, please. Why are substations needed? Substations are used to shut down high voltage transmissions below distribution voltage. The power can be supplied to homes, businesses. Typical substation, it is a fenced area with a security fence. It has a gate on it, has a lock gate. That's all put in place for public safety. And in that substation, you'll typically find power transformer, breakers, circuit switchers, steel structure, and that's a typical substation. Next slide, please. Why relocate Union Street Substation? Relocating the long-existing substation at twenty-three Spike Street, known as Union Street Sub, has numerous technical benefits. Relocation to Paradise Row will be subsidized by forty percent of four-point-six million dollars through the Disaster Asset Patient Mitigation Fund, EMAT, federal funding initiative. Union Substation is currently in a zone that has a risk of flooding, the sea level's continued to rise. Ninety Paradise Row is at a higher elevation from sea level, thereby reducing flood. Union Substation was previously fitted underground transmission. Paradise Row will be fitted overhead transmission. Overhead transmission will allow reclosing, which allows the line to clear temporary faults and improve reliability for our customers. Underground transmission does not allow this. Overhead transmission failures are easy to locate if the line is visible. Next slide. Why relocate? The new location provides an opportunity for easy installation of new equipment. Union Substation is at the end of its life, it needs to be replaced. The new Paradise Row substation can be fully constructed, if we commission Union Street. Newer, more advanced equipment will provide greater reliability, empowering the uptown downtown area. Building technology is available today that allows greater remote monitoring capabilities. The new location will also allow auto-transfer capabilities. The scheme will allow auto-transferring from Transmission Circuit One to Transmission Circuit Two, getting Paradise Row, to gain increased reliability. Next slide, please. These next few slides are, just to capture the journey that we've taken through a new substation site, which began in two thousand and sixteen. The next few slides are going to highlight the due diligence process in progress. This slide captures all sixteen properties that were part of the due diligence process. Next slide, please. These remaining properties that are identified on here, met electrical service needs requirements. Next slide. These remaining properties also met the no-underground basement requirement. Next slide. These remaining properties also met the land availability to buy requirement, and these met the flood level requirement. And finally, the final property at ninety Paradise Row also met the minimize, minimizes the residential impact requirement that we were looking for. Next slide, please. This table represents, slide by slide, compared to the top three options. As you see across, option one, Paradise Row, option two, Somerset Street Substation, option three, Union Street Substation, sets well. I'll start with option three. Option three, as you see at the very bottom, we have two red circles on that. Environmental risk, if we cut the substation at Union Street Sub, we'd still be in that flood zone, we still have that great flood risk, and it would remove that developmental potential that would be there from that property up front on the waterfront. Option two, Somerset Street Sub, as you can see by the number of red dots on that, it would not meet a requirement for cost, sustainability, reliability, or load capacity. When you look at the option number one for Paradise Row, it's green across the board for us, and that's why we recommend it, Paradise Row, for this project. Next slide, please. Just to... Let's just, just to talk upon the residential impact of the option. This is Union Street Substation, you can see two red circles around that, one to fifty meters, one to the hundred meters. This shows that there's a hundred and two customers in the fifty-meter zone, a hundred and ninety-three customers in the hundred-meter zone. Next slide, please. Somerset Street Substation, in fifty-meter zone, there's eighteen customers. In the hundred-meter zone, there's forty-two customers. Next slide, please. Ninety Paradise Row, option, within fifty meters, there's two customers, and with the hundred meters in substation, there's sixteen customers. This is of those three options, the best in our view. It's the least number of customers, next to spite, the best. If any new building, it'll affect the additional customers in the surrounding area, and their concerns are just as important to us and this project in the immediate vicinity. So that was part of our concerns that were raised during our public session on February twenty-sixth. We did a lot of listening at that session. Next slide, please. And this is just a summary of selection criteria that I've already gone over. Next slide, please. This was the original design that we had spoken to the public about on February twenty-sixth. And as you can see, starting on the left, you can see the large wooden structures on the left, the poles, that has two hundred and thirty-eight KV transmission lines on that, those poles are at least sixty feet tall. They are heading into the substation, then there's a large steel structure that's approximately thirty, forty feet tall, and then you have your transformer, shocker equipment, and fenced off. And that was our original design for the shrubs and trees in the front, the dead-end structures for the one-thirty-eight KV system, and three transmission circuits, two from the left and one from the right, and a subtransmission line coming in from the wind farm, and the grounding transformer in the back. Next slide, please. After our session with the public and a number of interactions with the public, this is what we've come up with, and this is our design. And as you see from the left, the line is on a lot shorter poles, a lot lighter conductor. It's not one-thirty-eight KV, it's sixty-nine KV line coming in. The pole that's next to the substation on the left, that pole is... That pole's forty-five feet tall, which means thirty-nine feet if it's above ground. As you can see from the wall, that's the extension across the front of that concrete wall, there's an extension of the buildings, the civil works on the left. The steel structures are gone, that was a major concern of the public when they were talking to us. Also, they were concerned about the gates in the front, so we happened to put a solid wall across the front. As you can see, we have a roadway along the back, along the edge of Paradise Row to the back, so our heavy vehicles will block complete traffic at all, as Mr. Turner had referenced. In the back, it will be a large lock gate, and there will be multiple layers of security on that facility, as are with all of our facilities. I think that's just so captured. I can open the questions, if you want to go to the next slide, please? Yeah, we'll open to any questions, that's, you may have, your worship.
Okay, thank you again. If we could just stop sharing, just so I can see my screen, and, perfect, thank you. Any questions for our last presenter, Counselor Casey, to kick us off?
Thank you, worship. I just had a few questions about, let's see here, you mentioned, I think you mentioned why the lines weren't underground? You covered that briefly, can you explain that a little bit more?
That's a technical question, I'd like to defer that to Mr. Garland from Envy Power, just to see on the underground versus overhead options.
Okay, I think they're all technical, so I'll just wait then.
Uh, Mr. Garland, right here. Good evening, Bob Garland, Envy Power Transportation Distribution. The current system in downtown St. John, it's fit with a mixture of overhead and underground. As it approaches the uptown core, it was placed underground back in the seventies. And what Mr. Young is referring to, underground circuits, we do not, by policy, reclose almost when there are temporary faults. So the overhead portion is subject to weather events, and the two supplies into the Union Street Substation, there can be a temporary fault on it, and we do not know if it's in the underground portion or the overhead portion, until we get out and inspect it. And where the substation is located away from the uptown core, we can feed it overhead, and it'll have two overhead supplies that we can, by policy, reclose, and if one of them actually happens to have a permanent fault on it, it will auto-transfer to the other supply, thereby improving the reliability. So that is the, that's the crux of the idea behind the substation having higher reliability. Even though we have two underground supplies to the uptown core, we can't reclose and we can't auto-transfer until we get out and find out where the fault is.
Okay, and you're cut it by half, does that mean you're going to have to do another substation somewhere else, or is this big enough?
This substation is being built to service the growth potential for the south end for the next sixty-five years. So we are certainly putting in, like, the substation that will, based on the growth strategy that we've heard, it'll cover all the ground that's required. It'll be large enough.
Okay, I'm just wondering why you want to do one thirty-eight one then, instead?
Can you ask it again, please, through your worship?
Sorry, Counselor, your question is, in the public consultation phase, there were some changes made around the size and some of the equipment in the substation, and your question is, why the downsizing? Is that the question?
Well, if sixty-nine is big enough, then why did you want to do one thirty-eight?
Counselor, just...
It was, it's Bob Garland again here, it was, there are plans well into the future in the power, it's eyeing the possibility of another circuit between Colton Cove and Courtney Bay, and then we look at our options, and we had mentioned to St. John Energy that they may want to consider going to one thirty-eight KV as a fifty-year investment, but there are no plans to decommission sixty-nine KV system. There is enough capacity in that system to supply the load. If, once we consulted with our corporate planning group, the decision was to stay at sixty-nine, and it reduces the footprint of the lines, and there's still plenty of capacity there.
Okay.
Folks, Counselor, just want to share a reflection here with you, so not trying to limit debate by any means, we're at about forty minutes in. I think it's illustrative of the work that this group has done, that there's no opposition to this, there's been pretty significant changes to the equipment, to the size of the structure, there's walls to break down noise, so there's been a tremendous amount of work done here. Again, not trying to limit, but we're forty minutes in, there's no one on this call today is speaking in opposition, and I just sort of ask us to keep that in mind as we continue through our questions. Okay, thank you. Sorry, you have a follow-up, Counselor Casey?
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want you to waste the money, I'm building another one, when you, that's all, like, to build one, if you needed that one thirty-eight kilovolts, just build one instead of building two, it's, that's what I was trying to get at, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. We lost you, Counselor.
Back there, thank you, worship. I noticed in the original proposal that, so there will be a sound-absorbing wall, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, in the original proposal, it's not set on the concrete or the cinder blocks or whatever it is. So is the total height of it the same, or does it go up by the height of the cinder block and then the sound-absorbing walls on top of that? Or is it just, is it two-point-four meters in total in the revised proposal?
Two-point-four plus the retaining wall.
Yes, it's two-point-four meters above the retaining wall.
Yes, it's 2.4 meters above the retaining wall.
It's 2.4. It says it'll have a sound barrier, a sound-absorbing wall of 2.4 meters. But in the smaller, it just, the smaller substation, it's, that wall, that brown wall that was in the original, is now built up on a concrete wall, it looks like, underneath it. So I was wondering if the whole thing is higher, or if the whole thing is still 2.4. Just for the public's interest, I am, I'm supporting this, this project, obviously. I think it's important to the neighborhood to understand what's happened here, you know, all of the due diligence that's been part of it. And I'm just having a question about that wall, that's all.
So the sound, the crevice wall, that is 2.4 meters high, as it was in both designs, the underground, the ground in front is some built-up just to even reduce the risk of flooding even more. And that's the concrete retaining wall on the front of it, but that's separate from the crevice wall on top of it, that's 2.4 meters, which is...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Thanks, I think I have a couple of questions around, I'm just a bit, a little bit confused around, and it may be for Mr. Garland. What's the involvement in NB Power in this substation versus St. John Energy? What role is NB Power playing here?
NB Power provides transmission service only.
Okay. And then, and then how does this move, is this move a benefit to NB Power from the current status quo?
Yes, it does. It enables us to abandon the underground circuits in the uptown core.
Okay, and so if we stayed where we were, and I don't think, but is there savings involved in that by abandoning?
Yes. Substantial savings.
What does substantial savings mean?
Millions. We had budgeted approximately between the five and a half, six and a half million dollars to replace both underground cables to feed the Union Street substation. And we haven't got a final design right now for this, but we're looking at between a million and a half, two million to supply transmission service. So it's in the three and a half to four million dollar savings.
Okay, so this partnership with St. John Energy will deliver a three and a half to four million dollar savings by moving away from Union Street?
So the rate payers, it's socialized, the transmission costs is socialized to all rate payers, but it helps keep rates down, absolutely.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, perfect, thank you. Sorry, and I've lost track. Mr. Turner, do we have another presentation, or where are we in terms of those wishing to speak in favor here?
No, your worship, that's the completion of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. One more call then for questions to this group, and then we'll go to staff if there's any questions. Thank you. Counselor McKenzie, did you have a question for our presenters?
No, your worship, I thought we were ready to move.
Almost. Deputy Mayor, do you have a question? You're muted, deputy.
Oh, I'm sorry, you wouldn't have heard me. No, I don't have a question, I just thought we were ready to move first reading.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, thank you very much to our presenters then. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, not seeing any, then now we're ready to move.
I'll move first reading.
Thank you. Moved by the deputy, seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. And, okay, perfect on the question then, I'll call that question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any, thank you. Okay, and move...
A law to amend the...
Sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, worship, I just have to read out the title procedurally. It's a law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you.
Second reading.
Thank you, deputy, moved second, and seconded by Counselor Mayor, thank you. And on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Motion is carried, thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank everyone, I think that's a great example of engaging with the community and working through a process, and I would like to say thank you to the proponents and to our staff team for all that work. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Yes, your worship, the next item is 9.2 on your agenda, it's another public hearing. This one's for a proposed rezoning at 85 Peacock Lane. This also has a planning advisory committee report which recommends the rezoning. There is a staff presentation with this as well, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Willett.
Okay, thank you. Acting Commissioner Willett, okay.
Thank you, and through your worship, this next application for the public hearing is to facilitate a caretaker dwelling at 85 Peacock Lane. Initially, the applicant was the only, was only to deal with this for the subject site. However, staff felt there may be other community center uses in the park zone. So this is how they've approached it, the application is not to allow residential development for residential purposes into park zone, and that was explicit in the PAC report as well as the report before you. This includes for Rockwood Park. We have Paul Cummings from the Joshua Group available for questions on behalf of the applicant here today. A detailed letter from the Joshua Group has been received and distributed to council as well. I will now turn it over to Ken Malottson for a quick staff presentation.
Thanks, Phil, I'll just share the presentation here, and I'll go through this very quickly. So as Phil mentioned, this application was mainly to facilitate a caretaker dwelling for the subject site. However, as we were investigating this proposal, we saw that there may be other sort of community center uses in the park zone, where this type of security building might actually be of use in order to provide security. Here's the main site from the Joshua Group. And here is the site plan that they've proposed. There was originally a caretaker dwelling in this location, so they are essentially reusing the existing location. There's an existing well and septic on site as well. Here is a look at the proposed caretaker dwelling. It's quite small. Caretaker dwellings are really intended to provide security personnel a place to get out of the elements while they're providing security, and it's not about residential habitation. Here's the floor plans. There's an aerial view of the subject site, you can see that Rockwood Park comes very close to the subject site. Number of pathways bring people very close, and it is our understanding from the Joshua Group that people have been going on the site, there have been a number of break-in situations as well. Here's the site from the road. This is basically the subject location for the building right here. This mature tree will remain. Here's looking down from the accessory building to the subject sites, the building would go essentially here. And looking again, as I mentioned, this tree will be retained. The subject designation is parks and natural areas. Municipal plan is very clear, the parks and natural areas is not for residential habitation. But what it doesn't take into account is the need for security buildings for sites like this one, or other sites like the horse stables, for example. And so from that perspective, the municipal plan is supportive of a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, because it's not a specific residential use. The site is zoned park, and as mentioned, there's a, community centers are allowed, and this would be in support of those uses. So any other, any other uses could not apply for this type of caretaker dwelling at this point in time. And as mentioned, the proposed caretaker dwelling is typically much smaller than what you would see actually allowed for accessory buildings in the park zone as it is. So the proposal is substantially smaller than what the zoning bylaw allows. The staff recommendation to PAC was to adopt the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. In terms of public engagement, letters were mailed out, and the public hearing was advertised, and no letters from the public, one way or the other, were received at the time of PAC. And PAC is recommending the council adopt the proposed amendment. Thank you, worship.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Malottson. Just for a point of clarity, just for clarity for the public, sorry, common clerk, I believe we have no one wishing to speak, as Mr. Malottson just said, registered tonight in opposition to this file?
That's correct, your worship. We did have an original speaker lined up, but they were unable to attend due to unforeseen circumstances. And there was a letter from the Joshua Group that I distributed to council today, which will be added to the public records.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, the gentleman supporting was Paul, I didn't catch the last name, Mr. Malottson? Kerwin, yes. Mr. Kerwin, okay, and sorry, is Mr. Kerwin on the line with us tonight?
It's very common clerk, so we... Kerwin has been, yeah, Mr. Kerwin has been sent the invite, and the message that I received was that he'd be available for any questions.
Okay. Okay, thank you, we'll just call again. Mr. Kerwin, are you on the line? Okay, thank you. So I don't believe, well, we don't have anyone in opposition. It seems like perhaps we've got some technical issues for the, Mr. Kerwin, who wishes to speak in favor. We did receive a letter, we do have a recommendation. So with that, we'll keep the process moving. Counselor Reardon, over to you.
Thank you, worship, I have a question for staff. I'm just wondering, when was it zoned as park? Because it was Peacock Nursery at one point in time, Fire Nursery, and it had, I believe they lived there in the house that I think is probably either gone or they're going to take down. So at one point in time, it was a business, and so, and then the Joshua Group went into it after that, but it would have been a lag, I'm sure, of time for when that loads, and when the Joshua Group took it over, but, so I'm not sure how that happened.
Through your worship, from what I was able to determine, the zoning change, when the new zoning bylaw came into effect, so that was when it switched to park.
But would that be dependent on the ownership of it? I mean, if Peacock had sold it?
Through your worship, no, it wouldn't have, it would have been based upon what generally was going on on the site. So if the commercial business had essentially stopped, or was still going on, but the bulk of it was more appropriate to park, then those uses that would have been more commercial would have become non-conforming, and those uses don't seem to be active anymore. So they've since stopped. So those protections under the non-conforming use no longer apply.
So Ken, when you go into that site, it's very secluded in there, which probably was great for, you know, growing plants, et cetera. I'm sure it's a little microclimate in there, but is there any intention to, I haven't been in there in years, to sort of expose that property more to the road? For safety and, you know, it would be eyes on the property versus, you know, caretaker? I don't know.
Through your worship, my understanding from the Joshua Group, and if they were here, I'd happily defer this question, is that the caretaker building is the primary getting eyes on this site because of the issues of people coming from the pathways of Rockwood Park. I'm afraid I don't know the answer to whether or not they're going to expose more of the site at this time.
Yeah, because the road goes right along their passage, and it's fairly busy, so it would be great to have some visibility there. Anyways, thanks, Ken.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Your worship, I'll move the PAC recommendation.
For first reading, okay, thank you.
You said first reading?
Yep, thank you.
First reading.
Thank you, deputy, seconded by Counselor Higgy, thank you. Not seeing any other questions, okay, thank you, I'll call our question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any, thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city...
I'll move second reading.
Thank you, deputy, seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you, sorry. Thank you on the question, sorry, I think, so are you okay with that, Counselor Sullivan? I had you as the second, okay, thanks, sorry. I'm sorry, I can't wait till we get back in our chamber, because I'm trying to read eyebrows and facial expressions, and, perfect, thank you. Okay, on the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Okay, the motion is carried, thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Your worship, the final public hearing item is 9.3 on your agenda, and it's for a proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw amendment for 1020 Rossay Road. This also has a PAC recommending the rezoning, and there is not a recommended staff presentation for the site.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, and again, we had no one wishing to speak against this, this rezoning, but I understood that we did have the applicant wishing to speak in favor. Do we have the applicant on the line?
Yes, your worship, Kevin Harris.
Oh, hi, Mr. Harris, thank you for joining us. And I assume, sir, you're in favor of staff and PAC recommendations?
Yes, I spent quite a bit of time, and we've worked together on it, and I'd like to move forward, yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Counselor, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, not seeing any, do I have anyone...
First reading.
Moved first reading by the deputy mayor, thank you. And do I have a second here by Counselor Sullivan? Thank you. Okay, and, sorry, Counselor Reardon, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
I have a question for staff, I thought you were going to call the questions for staff. I just have a quick question, I'm going to support this. I just have a quick question. It states that it's a private railway crossing. Who determines that it's private? I'm just curious, as we shift from rural to, what is it, a rural general commercial and a two-unit residential to general commercial, who, does that, is that designation a private railway crossing still stand? I don't know who designates that, maybe the city has nothing to do with the designation of a railway crossing, whether it's private or isn't private.
So through your worship, if you'll, just give me a moment, I'm going to bring up the original staff presentation, because there's a wonderful map that I think will answer your question here. Or I could be wrong. Oh, I guess not. So what I'll say, Counselor, is that private crossings are designated mostly through CN, so it is their railway crossing, they determine the type of crossing that happens. So it can sometimes be a private landowner crossing, such as this situation where it's a private landowner gaining access to a parcel, or it could be a municipal crossing where the railway cuts through the municipality and there's an aggregate road crossing. In terms of your question about the zone, the proposed rezonings, one of the things that is a little bit unique with this site is that the primary development area boundary follows the railway kind, so, or the railway line. So the portion of the property that fronts to Rossay Road is within the PBA, and so we have to use the zones that work within the PDA. But the other piece that's on the opposite side is outside of the PDA, hence why you have two proposed zones.
Thank you for that clarification, Ken, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. The first reading is on the floor, so I'll call that question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any, thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city...
Second reading.
Thank you, moved by the deputy, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you. And on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any, thank you, motion is carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to all the staff work and all the proponents tonight for those public hearings. Okay, thank you, next item?
Your worship, we had skipped over members' comments, would be the next one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Sullivan, kick us off. You're wearing mask, you go first.
Thanks, your worship. Just first, a thank you to my sister-in-law, who's my provider of masks. But just a reminder to everybody who's watching that, very, very important, although, you know, our current bubble, we have no active cases, and there's no new case of COVID, certainly we are still in a worldwide pandemic. And I would encourage everybody to continue to social distance and have a mask with you so that when you're out in public at stores or restaurants, that you can wear your mask, because we don't know... know necessarily when interactions could be, where you can't social distance. And we don't necessarily wear a mask for ourselves, but we're wearing our masks to keep our exhalation from going somewhere else. And there are a lot of people in the world today who are very anxious about going out and about. And it really helps everybody when you wear your mask. So please, you can get fashionable with them. They are very comfortable. And those of us with glasses eventually figure out how to wear them and not to steam up our glasses. So that's awesome, Counselor Hickey. So that's the first. And second, you know, a nice little kind of economic payback. Thanks to the Blue Nose Two for coming to visit and kind of doing the sail pass on the weekend. I happen to be one of a number of boats who took the beautiful day to go into the harbor to get a closer view. But the market slip docks were full house. Every space was taken by boats who had gone down to enjoy the harbor, see the Blue Nose Two. And everybody I spoke to, also whether it was before Blue Nose Two was here or afterwards, made sure they went up and spent some money at our restaurants and market uptown, which is exactly what we want. So those boaters out there, make sure you come down, enjoy the docks. And when you're on the docks, make sure you're enjoying Market Square and the market and all the shops uptown that we have to offer. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. Deputy Mayor, you're next up. I'm going to see you, Counselor Armstrong. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to mention a couple nice little things. And, you know, St. John is a great city where people get together in the morning, especially at coffee shops. In the past, we've always done that. And many times, they solve all the issues of the city by doing that. You know, they get together, share all their thoughts. And in this difficult time, this summer, sometimes it's very difficult to do that. What people are doing, and I've noticed this in several different locations across the city, where they can't get together in the coffee shops, they're getting their coffee, taking their lawn chair, and placing themselves six feet apart, and having little get-togethers, like on a piece of land. Normally, it's somewhere that has a nice tree that has some shade. But also out at Rockwood Park, that's happening. And I think it's a really nice way to get together with your friends and stay in touch. So I'm just mentioning that. So in case there's other people that would like to try that and, you know, enjoy their summer, I just think it's a great thing for people to do that, to get together, follow the rules, but yet enjoy themselves. My second issue is I want to compliment and congratulate, I don't know them personally, but there were a number of people in the newspaper this morning that have planted flowers and gardens in the uptown. So I think that's great. They've gone out, done their gardening work for everyone to enjoy. And, your worship, you know, a few months ago, we passed city awards. We changed their way of doing, complimenting citizens and giving them awards. I hope that maybe this could be, some of these people could be nominated maybe for one of those city awards later on, whether it's next spring when we first start that, because they've done great work in the uptown. So I just want to congratulate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy, Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to mention that charities in the West Side lost some strong volunteer women, almost Doreen Clark, on June 15. She was a steward of the Milford Community Center, put a lot of time, effort, and she'll be missed by the community. And the other is on July 20, the little community of Randolph lost Doreen Beal. And the deputy awarded her an award about six months ago. The place was full. And she put her heart and soul into that community center. She lived just up the street, and she was there for like six seconds. So I just want to acknowledge that, and communities, we're missing those hardworking volunteers. And that's the people we need in this city. Keep the communities together and functional. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Just very quickly, for me, first of all, just how proud I am to be a New Brunswicker, a St. Johner. We just came off of New Brunswick Day weekend. It was absolutely fabulous. Great to see people out. And as Counselor Sullivan said, we are in different times, but certainly great to see people out. I'm seeing people celebrating Rockwood Park out and about, on Harbor Passage, at the nature park. I enjoyed some time out in our beautiful river system this weekend. And just how proud I am as a group, as a council, supported by our fantastic employees and staff, we're really moving forward. And we've made some difficult decisions, but we are moving forward, and the future is very, very bright. I did have an opportunity to get out and see the beautiful Blue Nose Two. Thank you to the province of Nova Scotia, and to the Blue Nose Two and her crew for sailing by historic Partridge Island. It was absolutely spectacular. I met, I'm estimating, a thousand-pound Mola Mola, which is a Caribbean sunfish, which we mistakenly thought was half a halibut on the weekend out. So if any marine biologists would like to join me in my next trip out into the harbor, please do that. Special congratulations to Ray Gracewood, Terry Wagner, his team with Area 506. Thank you for the province for, this would have been Area 506 weekend, but we had Area 506 online last night at seven o'clock. Go and check out that broadcast. It was just absolutely fantastic. Thank you, as the deputy said, to all of those that stepped up to adopt flower beds in and around the city. And lastly, today would have been my dad's 82nd birthday. Love you and miss you, Dad. Next item, please.
Your worship, next item is a proclamation. And this one is item 7.1 on your agenda. And it's for India Independence Day.
Okay, well, thank you. It's my honor to read this proclamation. And it reads, whereas, India is a diverse, vibrant land, rich in heritage, tradition, and a variety of topographies, cultures, and languages. While each region in the country has its own distinct individuality, they are at the same time a proud part of their united identity, the nation of India. And whereas, India is home to almost 1.4 billion people, and holds a significant position in the world's economic, political, social, and cultural landscape. Over the years, many people from India have immigrated to Canada to live, work, and contribute to the development of Canada as a strong, diverse nation. Their love and gratitude for their new home holds as strong as it does for their country of origin. And whereas, in St. John too, we now have a sizable and rapidly growing Indian community, who with their energy, passion, and hard work, actively contribute not only to our economy, but to the richness of our social and cultural spectrum. While connected to their roots, they have embraced their new home, sharing their traditions and cultures freely with our community, but also adapting to their present surroundings. And whereas, August 15 is India's Independence Day. In 2020, this day marks the completion of 73 years of India's existence as a sovereign, socialist, secular, democratic republic. It is a time of joy and celebration of India's eventful journey and progress to the present day. It is also a time to recognize the pain and hardship endured to reach this point, and show gratitude to the many selfless souls whose courage and sacrifice earned India its freedom and identity as an independent nation. To them, today, we bow as the Indian national flag is raised in honor of this momentous milestone of remarkable, of a remarkable nation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Don Darling of St. John, do hereby proclaim August 15, 2020, as India Independence Day in the city of St. John. And I will add that is beautifully written, and exactly what I've experienced with the Indo-Canadian Society of St. John, in terms of their embrace of our beautiful greater region of St. John. So thank you very much. And Common Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, your worship, we have a third reading of the bylaw, and it's 10.1 on your agenda. And this is for street events. It would change Schedule P. So it's a traffic amendment of the bylaw for street events, Schedule P. And it requires two motions of counsel, one to read it in its entirety, and another motion by title.
Okay, thank you. Run.
Third by entirely?
Okay, moved by entirety. Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Sullivan. Thank you. All right, on that question, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Not hearing any. Thank you.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting the traffic on streets in the city of St. John, bylaw number MV 10.1, and amendments thereto be enacted by the common council of the city of St. John. A bylaw of the city of St. John entitled, "A Bylaw Respecting the Traffic on Streets in the City of St. John," bylaw number MV 10.1, and amendments thereto enacted on the 7th day of October 29, be amended as follows. One, subsection 2.2 is amended by repealing the definition of "street event." Number two, subsection 4.4 is repealed and replaced with the following. 4.4, the chief of police is authorized in connection with a street event, am it issued under Schedule P, through this bylaw to reroute traffic on any street in the city. And three, Schedule P regulation respecting possessions and assemblies on public streets is repealed and replaced with the following. See news Schedule P attached.
Okay, thank you. And by title?
I'll move.
Thank you, Deputy. Moved, seconded again by Counselor Sullivan. Thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Thank you. Not hearing or seeing anyone. Motion is carried.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting the traffic on streets in the city of St. John, bylaw number MV 10.1, and amendments thereto.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is a business matter under section 12 on the agenda. And it's 12.1. It's sustainability update. It's a verbal update from the city.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. City manager?
Your worship, members of council, good evening. As you will recall, this is a standing agenda item this evening. I will touch on two separate points. First of all, a couple very quick points about our current situation with regards to the pandemic. And then I'll move on to the larger notion of our sustainability for the longer term. First of all, on the pandemic, Counselor Sullivan did indeed steal some of my thunder, in that we are not through this yet, although we would optimistically wish that it was in our rearview near. We continue to monitor the financial situation very closely. I will tell you that at this point in time, we do believe, based on our financial estimates, that we have restored all the services that we can possibly restore to the end of the calendar year. Something would have to change rather significantly in our financial outlooks in order to restore anything else. Put another way, the cupboard is bare, and therefore we will be asking for the patience, tolerance, and understanding of our public as we work through with our limited budgets to the end of the year. That said, we do have some minor funds to implement specific initiatives. And one that we are implementing, starting this Wednesday, the 6th of August, is the issuance of masks to those who cannot find masks in any other way. As we all know, the Chief Medical Officer of Health of the Province of New Brunswick strongly recommends that masks be worn anytime you are indoors, in confined spaces, or anywhere else where social distancing is not possible. To reinforce that message, and to also assist our community, we will be, as of this Wednesday, offering free masks at several locations throughout the city. The limit will be two per person, but of course, people can return on several occasions in order to get more. But in any one visit, the limit will be two masks. We will be providing these masks free of charge at city offices, here at City Hall, through the cashier's office, at the St. John Municipal Operations Building on Rossay Avenue, and at our facilities on Adelaide Street. We have also partnered with several of our community groups to provide them a supply of masks at their locations, where people who arrive and ask for them there will also be provided them on behalf of the city. The exact locations of where these masks will be available will be announced to the public through a public service announcement that will be issued tomorrow in anticipation of being able to conduct them starting this Wednesday. Our mask supply is limited, both in terms of our ability to get masks, but also in terms of our ability to pay for the masks. We will do what we can. We are providing the supply until, frankly, the supply runs out or the month runs out. Have been asked already by several people whether we can provide these masks on our transit buses. We cannot, certainly not at this time. We have some 30, 40 bucks on route that need to be used in time during the day, and that would defeat a supply of masks too quickly for what we afford and what we have on hand. If anybody who requires a mask in order to rent our transit system and go to near the other location, pick up a mask accordingly. That is the, those are the updated comments on our current COVID-19 situation. Trying to sustainably broadly, I'll be announced with our specific dates we will be applying by the end on the 13th of August, present our potential, the review, pending the results of the financial review. It is our intention to present the budget for council, for your review and approval at the end of August. It will be a provisional approval, because we, of course, will not ever see our actual or details on the condition grant at that time. Therefore, just maybe record in November, and we'll explain how we will post adjustments at the end. In addition to that, I will report to council in terms of our Prong 2, addressing the deficit for 2021. We remain on track. We still need to return to council for several bylaws amendments and changes over the coming months. I'm confident that we will maintain that timeline. I would be remiss if I did not point out that we still have three expired collective agreements that will affect the overall financial situation of the city. That is the state department, Transit Union, and also for our police department. And therefore, we're closely monitoring the progress on the renewal of those various collective agreements. We also have a significant transit review as part of the Prong 2 initiatives, as part of that $10 million deficit that needs to be seen through to completion. There's still a great amount of work to be done there. The other two prongs are our overall sustainability plan, because again, I stress, it's not just about the budget 2021. It's about assuring the long-term sustainability of the city. We continue to focus on what is described in the plan as Prong 1 and Prong 3. In Prong 1, we continue our review of the agencies, ports, and commissions. And I am hopeful that in the coming months, we will come to council with some concrete recommendations on varying business models that can be adopted within some of those ABCs. We continue with our organizational restructure of the staff within City Hall and the move into the new City Hall spaces. And both of those, the move and the restructure, should be completed around the end of September, certainly by mid-October. We continue our review of the operational audit, the Ernst &amp; Young Report, and our recommendations for an implementation plan to council will be provided in October. And we continue to make progress on the regional economic development model, which is to be in place by the 1st of January 2021. On Prong 3, the transformational reforms, we remain focused on working with the province on comprehensive property tax reform, on working with the province and the region on regional cost sharing, on working with the province to have them change the legislation with regards to binding arbitration, and also to explore innovative and new ways of empowering cities so that we can better generate revenue and have more flexibility in our laws and bylaws. That concludes the sustainability update for this council session. Subject to questions?
Okay, thank you, city manager. Make it sound easy. I know it's not been. I know staff and yourself have put a tremendous effort into all that work. Counselor McKenzie?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the city manager. Would it be possible for us to have a location closer to those that would need these masks that we're offering? I'm thinking of like the hub on. need these masks that we're offering? I'm thinking of like the hub on Prince Edward Street uh, near the uh, shelters for the men and women. Those are the people I worry don't have the means to get a mask.
Uh, through you to, uh, your worship to the council. I think when you see the list of all of the community centers whereby we are offering masks, you'll see that the distribution is uh, along the lines of what you're looking for. It's not just at the three city locations. I believe the total is, there are ten other locations, all included on the public service announcement where people can go and get masks.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Okay, receive and file, please, council. Thank you. Move by councillor Sullivan, seconded by councillor Mayor, thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary minded? Not seeing any. Thank you. Thanks again for that, city manager, to you and your team. Okay, next item?
Uh, your worship, twelve point two on your agenda is a staff report with respect to economic and community recovery, update and next steps.
Okay, thank you, acting, acting commissioner Ulet. Thank you, sir.
Through your worship, to members of council again, happy to uh, give you all a little update on our economic and community recovery efforts. I will be sharing my screen for this. As mentioned in the growth committee, this uh, is a very photo-heavy presentation and me talking, so you'll see less information on slides. But uh, I also wanted to share with you uh, that uh, this this slide deck has changed because we received data uh, through a survey that we administered last week that was part of the report. And we just wanted to clarify that the this this presentation has some new information uh, because the uh, the survey results just got compiled today. So uh, council on May twenty fifth uh, provided advice uh, as as part of advice to the growth committee, uh, endorsed a variety of resolutions to proceed with the municipal and economic community recovery plan. And today, we wanted to bring you up to speed on a variety of programs uh, that are associated to that plan. Uh, as a reminder, the the major objective here is to accelerate economic and community recovery, especially in our commercial districts of the city. So uh, there's eight active uh, initiatives uh, that uh, that are part of this uh, economic and community recovery. I'll kind of go through them very quickly. The open streets one will receive a little bit more attention because of the survey results that I'll be sharing with you. So first is the new pop-up park. This is located between Fundy Key and Loyalist Plaza. Uh, the fencing has been removed. There's new sod, there's picnic tables, there's tree stump, there's tree stump seating from fallen trees from Rockwood Park. St. John Energy has partnered with the city to allow for some lighting in the evening. It's a beautiful place. Yeah, we can see, uh, we've received feedback from nearby vendors as well as residents and staff that it is highly used, especially during the lunch hours for people grabbing lunch and coming to those picnic tables, as well as at night for kind of an overflow from the market square uh, area. This is just another location, another image of it. And there's those tree stump seats that everybody's talking about. Uh, the next one is uh, artistic picnic, artistic picnic tables. This idea was to create picnic tables and then to laminate them with local art uh, in our community, from our community. So we've uh, since established or fabricated the picnic tables, the community arts board has has offered advice and direction on which pieces of art should be placed onto these picnic tables. Uh, and during this week, they will be installed in different locations, starting this week across the city. Um, this was used to be a traveling picnic table initiative, but we, for resources reasons, we could not sustain that. So we're going to identify locations across the city, and that's where it will be for the rest of the summer. And then we'll decide where they go next year. This is another image of some of the art going on the picnic tables. Okay, so for open streets, um, council uh, also support endorsed the direction for this. Uh, as you may remember, we were going to start with three pilots, wanted to see how it was going to go. Um, we've had three. Uh, we've taken a week off last, this past weekend was a week off. And we wanted to uh, get some more input from businesses on what exactly uh, they they are feeling. We received input during the events on site from the businesses. That was part of the operational plan to collect feedback. And the feedback was positive. So at growth committee last week, we recommended that there's enough evidence to proceed. However, we thought it was diligent to proceed with some additional uh, survey. So uh, this is what uh, we've got for you. Uh, we had three different um, um, open streets. Uh, they've all increased in size since the first one. I like to say that our first one was a rain day and it was a good dry run. Uh, and um, and then since then, we've just gotten better, more efficient, uh, more capable at attracting people. And I think the 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 weather was certainly a part of that as well. We've asked a series of questions last week, uh, the three open streets. Uh, we did primarily through online, but we also did some face-to-face. We got twenty-two businesses that responded. One of the questions that was asked was, has the city's open streets initiative supported your business in its recovery efforts? So you see thirty-two percent said no, and sixty-eight percent said yes. Uh, this is some of the feedback received. I'm not going to go through all of it. Uh, it is mixed. Uh, some, some thought it was really helpful. I think the easiest way to say it is that most people felt it was either neutral. An overwhelming majority felt it was either neutral or positive. Uh, a fewer number thought it was, or were opposed to it from a, from a standpoint. We also did get some, some, I believe, businesses that felt it was very, very uh, strong. Uh, some saying it was their busiest Saturday so far, uh, and it was the single biggest day for the reopening. Um, a lot of new customers entering in. But we also got feedback that people didn't really know what was going on sometimes. Some people felt frustrated. Uh, some people felt it didn't really have the impact that they thought it was going to have. Uh, so listen, I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything. I'm just giving you the the facts of the survey. Uh, so learnings, what did, uh, what did we get from this? Uh, one thing is that the city's been trying very hard to inform uh, residents, businesses of the locations, what's happening. You've done emails, we've been city website, social media, print media, uh, radio, ads, flyers, and in-person visits when we can. But despite all of this, we still fail on on some occasions. And some businesses still are like, what's going on here? And in some residents there. So we think we, we can improve on this. We have to improve on this. It's an ongoing effort. Uh, we'll be notifying businesses earlier uh, in trying to spread the word earlier. We've already announced the next round of uh, open streets um, so far. So we've already started that uh, that uh, exercise. Uh, we also think that uh, this is something that we're a little bit nervous about, but we still think we can manage. Is that it's a balancing act between advertising too much and attracting too many people. We, we think twenty-two hundred people, twenty-five hundred people throughout a day is is manageable, but probably ten to fifteen thousand is probably unmanageable. So we've got to find that right amount where there's a maximum of traffic that respects social distancing, that supports those local businesses, but without us having to get involved in uh, kind of uh, getting more fluidity through the crowds in in the open street. And we, we also understand that some businesses are just opposed to this. And that's something that we've taken on in the first three pilots. Some businesses just called us up and said, we don't like it. We don't want it to happen. And as much as possible, we've tried to adapt each open street for those particular concerns, whether it's timing, the location of the streets, where the animation is happening. And we've tried the best of our abilities to do that. But uh, it is still clear that some uh, some folks, some businesses still are opposed to this as we go forward. We also have uh, learned that uh, we've left some of the picnic tables behind from an efficiency standpoint. So we don't have to transport as much uh, uh, materials on the day of an open street. And this has actually been uh, a little bit of a good news story because a lot of the businesses have commented uh, favorably on the picnic tables, more picnic tables being available around the central core of the commercial district of the uptown. And uh, that has not, that was not intentional. It was more of a keep it easier for staff. But it's worked out pretty well from what we understand that the feedback received on that. So this is another stat is our, is your business supportive of the city continuing with open streets initiatives for the remainder of the summer and into the early fall? And eighty-one percent said yes, and nineteen percent said no. So with that, uh, staff are proposing to proceed. We uh, we already have plans in place. We've already made announcements for the next one. As you can see, everything is highlighted. These are just a couple of changes of the open streets. We're going to be taking long weekends off. Uh, so this past weekend was off. Uh, September fifth will be off. But everything else will be on. We're also going to test out the ability to include Princess Between Charlotte and uh, Jermaine as part of the uh, Jermaine and Granin one. Uh, so you can just imagine some of the businesses up there. We're going to test that out on August fifteenth. And if it goes well, we'll continue in uh, doing it again on September twelfth. We also have a maybe date for the September twenty six, sixth. We're not sure if that's too late in the season, but uh, more to come. And as we progress through these, we're also going to be seeking to partner with our local community partners uh, to animate these. Okay, for fifteen-minute parking, uh, at the end of this week, we should have the signs uh, installed in these different two. You might see them. You might have to squint here. The blue squares are where these new fifteen-minute parking spots will be located across the city. Again, this is to encourage kind of that flow of curbside pickup service that is still uh, occurring across our commercial districts in the city. And council just approved the third reading of community-initiated street opening. So this will be a major uh, improvement on uh, invitation from community members to animate our community or our streets. Uh, this is also just as a reminder that a lot of the focus has been in the central peninsula for recovery efforts. But we have sought uh, how we can animate other areas. This is a great opportunity for other areas of the city who are interested in animating their streets, um, which may be less familiarity on how to do it uh, to apply and to seek community partners to do that. And uh, we're very keen on seeing those types of applications. Beer garden uh, on Loyalist Plaza and the animation of Loyalist Plaza has been a a priority as well. The RFP was obviously uh, issued uh, and granted to Gahan House. They've done a great job at animating Loyalist Plaza. And all indications are that uh, uh, they uh, they are getting, they're inviting clients, uh, customers regularly to the site. Uh, as I walk by regularly. The, to pedestrianize South Market Street, uh, we've kind of got a little bit of a hiccup here in terms of just installing the gate. This is a resourcing issue uh, that we've had, but the gate has been created. That will be uh, the foot of Charlotte Street going down South Market Street. And we're very excited to have that. So that is planned for mid-August. The night market, uh, there's been seven iterations of it, approximately a thousand people per Thursday. Um, that's come in, uh, strong uh, upholding of social distancing uh, through these events, even though they attract over a thousand people. Uh, the other uh, facet of the night market is that um, North Market has been used. And we've just kept on adding more and more tables. And as you kind of go up North Market Street, they keep using it. So that's a really interesting use that wasn't foreseen uh, for this, but really gaining traction. And people are really enjoying uh, that refuge as well. Uh, so with that, uh, that is the presentation. This is a receive and file. Uh, there is no uh, recommendation uh, for a resolution.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Ulet. Comments, questions, council? Thank you, councillor. Go ahead, councillor Redden first, and then the deputy.
Thank you, worship. Phil, I'm just wondering, um, so uh, so my kit obviously doesn't have all of the information that you just put up on the screen. But the, there was a formal, I guess, feedback form that went out to businesses, but that went out on the twenty-eighth, didn't it, or did it? And is that, is that what you're, what you have now in the kit? Like my kit, the report's written on the twenty-seventh. I think one one went out on the twenty-eighth, returned on the thirtieth. So is that what's in this, my kit now? Or what's in your presentation?
We would have released this survey, started last week. And uh, the deadline to submit feedback from businesses was the Friday. So the report acknowledges this, but that was, remember, our last open street was on Sat, was on that Saturday. So that's why we have a quick turnaround time. We wanted to make this council meeting. Uh, we also acknowledged that we thought we had enough evidence to proceed, but we we still felt it was, it was prudent to proceed with more.
So the information that you've got there now, that's pretty much most of that survey's then come back. Okay, perfect. And I'll just mention that the picnic tables on Prince William Street on the Javamoose side are on quite a little slope. It would be, might be an idea to use a parking space and line them up so that they're six feet apart. But I know, I have noticed like you have, that a lot of people are using them at lunch, especially uh, you know, if it's a sunny day, obviously. So they are nice to have the picnic tables left behind. Uh, they are getting a lot of use. Thanks, Phil, for uh, for everything there.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Deputy mayor.
Oh, thank you, worship. Well, I just wanted to uh, pass on a comment. Uh, in some places, there's more benches. I think you put some uh, benches out on the streets that are open. Uh, I believe you have anyway, and they're left there. And people enjoy them because they then can sit on the benches. The same as I suppose they use the picnic tables. I mean, when people are walking around the uptown because there's so many hills, uh, they do enjoy uh, being able to sit on the benches. And certainly for some of our seniors that live down around um, the Hilton and that area, Smythe Street, uh, because the inside connection is closed on the weekends and early in the evenings, uh, it's hard for people to get to other places. Like they have to walk up King Street, which is very steep. So um, I've had comments from people saying that they really appreciate us having some benches out or some additional ones, and also where they can sit at the picnic tables. So uh, that's a plus, and it's good for the summer because people can just go around and maybe enjoy an ice cream or something and have a seat. So uh, thank you for that, because I think people uh, appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I'm over receiving file.
Thank you. Move by the deputy. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Hickey. Thank you. Uh, just very quickly, uh, Mr. Ulet, to you and your team, you know, I think you've uh, you've designed it. We were asked, you know, and again, I'm thinking back into maybe, maybe late March, early April, we should close streets, we should do all these things. Uh, you've designed it. I see you out lifting tables with Miss Wall shoots and volunteers. And so I want to thank you. I want to thank the volunteers. I want to thank folks who who have come out to give it a try. It's early days. Uh, and um, I, I'm, I'm glad, Phil, we're trying. Uh, it, it, you know, there's a lot of pluses. You've acknowledged that there's uh, some feedback on some things that we can do differently. And uh, I think it's, I think it's a good initiative. And I think it shows that the city is uh, pivoting and trying uh, to do things. I like the stumps. Gus likes the stumps. Uh, I was down to eat my lunch a couple of days last week in the pop-up park, and um, I just just want to say thanks. I think it's a great example of uh, trying something and gathering that feedback to see if we can't do it better the next time. So uh, uh, I, I appreciate it. Okay, on the question for receive and file, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please. Thank you to anyone contrary minded. Motion is uh, carried. Thank you. Next item, please.
Uh, twelve point three on the agenda is award of RFP twenty twenty customer service relationship management CRM software.
Okay, thank you, city manager, please.
Uh, your worship, members of council. Um, well over a year ago, we had uh, our, our beginning of conversations about how to improve customer service within the city of St. John. We uh, based on the analysis, we came to the conclusion fairly early on that simply having the will to improve was not going to be good enough. It wasn't going to get us to where we needed to be. The will has always been there, but there were limitations, uh, both structural, um, in terms of software, in terms of people that we have, to actually get it to where we needed it to be. Therefore, we launched an initiative to develop an integrated customer service center and all of the associated parts to uh, enhancing the customer service experience. As part of this introduction, I simply want to stress, because already people are focused just on the hardware and or the software that will be used to help enable this. This is much more, much more than simply a discussion on hardware and software. This is a discussion on cultural shift, on change in procedures and approaches in order to deli, and on how we measure our customer service in order to deliver a better customer service experience to all those who would seek us out or help or for comment. This evening, I am happy to introduce our uh, appointed manager for the Integrated Customer Service Center, Mr. Rachel Van Mort, who will provide you a full-up discussion, our full-up presentation, uh, enhanced somewhat from what was presented to finance committee uh, for council's consideration and with recommendations for approval this evening. Over to Rachel. Over to Rachel.
Good evening. I'll just share my screen. Okay, so good evening, your worship and members of common council. This evening, I'm pleased to introduce the Service St. John model, the city's Integrated Customer Service Center project to common council. To start, a brief outline of the presentation, I will review the current status of customer service across the organization, including various challenges that we are experiencing. I will explain what is Service St. John, what is the design, how do we get there and where's the value to stakeholders? I'll review the tools that are required for success, including our recommended CRM software solution. And I will provide an overview of the reinvestment and budget for this new service area, followed by our progress to date, next steps and key milestones, finishing up with the recommendation and any questions you may have. So what is the current status of customer service? The images and questions on the slide represent various different departments and phone numbers. Customer service functions within the city are currently decentralized with inconsistent approaches in various service areas and departments. Every department has their own approach, their own phone number, their own front desk. To add to this, there are various challenges as a result of lack of structure, process and tools. It isn't enough to simply say, let's improve customer service, let's think about customer service. That will not get us where we want to be. There's no formal standardized customer service training provided frontline staff. It's usually just on the job training. As a result, there can be high turnover rates for these positions. There's no database or technology to track calls, inquiries or questions. This results in limited analysis and accountability of service delivery and call-taking performance monitoring. Currently, for the citizen, there is a lack of full circle communication for progress updates on their requests. Citizens often have to call back for updates and employees may have to go digging for the information from various touchpoints. We also have numerous access points. Citizens are left to determine which of the various telephone listings and corporate label departments they need to contact for their inquiry. The current budget constraints demand efficiency improvements and citizens expect better community services for the property tax investment. The city has an obligation to search for better tools to track and manage the delivery of services. The city's new Integrated Customer Service Center will address these issues. So the new Service St. John model will be streamlined and enhanced approach to all citizen requests, questions and payments, in person, online and over the phone. In person, the City Hall move will create an inviting, easy access space with a ground floor front desk area for walk-in payments, questions and inquiries. To note, the one-stop development shop will have a separate front counter in the space, which is consistent with the approach in other municipalities. Online, the new city website will be focused on a customer-centric design by breaking down department silos and promoting self-service and access to information. Over the phone, there will be one phone number for citizens to access all city services. Our pre-existing customer service phone number for transportation and environment services and St. John Water, 658-4455, will be utilized. You might be wondering why we're not moving to a 311 phone number. A formal process through the CRTC and associated costs are required. In addition, regional collaboration is required. If we receive a call from a citizen Rossay or Grand Bay, how are those calls going to be routed accordingly? As there are currently other significant regional collaboration priorities, 311 will not be pursued at this time, but would be the eventual goal and a future phase for the project. The new front desk and contact center will be resourced using existing customer service staff from various service areas, which will provide a pooling of dedicated resources and cross-training opportunities. To enable this functionality for all city services, the appropriate technology is required, which I will introduce in the coming slides. As part of the project, we have completed best practice research and it is proven with various examples that a one-stop model works and it works well. Municipalities across North America are moving to a 311 model to standardize and provide enhanced service delivery. In addition, this approach provides the city with a centralized corporate focus on customer service, which is tied to corporate performance. So what is a citizen value? The model will allow the ability to provide full circle, transparent, automated communication to citizens and customers. Citizens expect a user-friendly approach and easy access to municipal services. This approach and associated tools will help make this happen. By reallocating savings and managing offsets to reinvest in the tools required, citizens will receive a high return on investment with long-term cost savings realized through a number of efficiencies and streamlined processes. Customers will receive a professional, standardized and consistent response when contacting the city, which reduces confusion and enhances customer service. Access to more online services will also enhance the customer experience, modernizing our service delivery. So what is the value to common council? The Service St. John model directly aligns with both councils valued service delivery and fiscally responsible priorities. Service SJ will be a significant service improvement and digital transformation for the city, aligning with best practices across the country and North America. Our neighboring municipalities, Frederton and Moncton, are moving towards this model. However, full implementation is not yet complete. We will be competitive with large city centers who have this model in place to continue to attract and grow our population with easy access to municipal services. There will be enhanced transparency for citizens with the ability to communicate service levels and turnaround times, automated dashboards and reporting capabilities, including mapping service requests, questions concerned by ward area. With this model and corporate focus, there will be continued opportunity for enhanced service delivery and value realized for taxpayers' investment. Finally, where there is value for citizens and common council, there's value for employees doing the work. All value propositions are linked. Our goal is to grow the city, serve the city and become the community of choice. If something is improved for the citizen, it impacts council and employees alike. We will be using our resources wisely with the frontline Service SJ staff responding to general inquiries and questions, which will in turn allow technical skilled staff to do what they do best. The staffing model will allow for the pooling of resources and cross-training for these extremely important frontline positions. It allows for variety and flexibility with the contact center and front desk located on the ground floor of City Hall. The amount of data that will be collected from this model is significant. This information will help to support fact-based decision-making, effective management and use of resources. Quality control processes will be in place with regular coaching and training opportunities to continually improve service delivery. So why now? Simply put, the implementation of an integrated customer service center aligns with various projects, including the City Hall move, the new city website and sustainability and restructuring initiatives. Long-term cost savings will be realized, but it requires action now. The required tools for success to implement this model include policies and procedures to ensure consistency with every employee when they are working with customers, training, which will not only include training for the Service SJ team, but for all employees to continue to reinforce the customer service culture we want to create, and technology, including customer relationship management software and an upgraded phone system. So what is CRM and why do we need it? CRM software, which is widely used in the public sector to track and manage customer sales and interactions, is now being widely used by municipalities across North America to track and help deliver non-emergency services to citizens. Seen as the backbone to 311 service delivery, it enables full circle communication, automation of workflows and standardized knowledge base for frontline staff. The city's current ERP system does not allow for this functionality. We need this software because if we don't have it, it's like asking an accountant to manage a budget without using an Excel spreadsheet. Sure, you could use a Word document, an old ledger, but it's inefficient and it doesn't make sense. There are no built-in formulas, running totals and trying to extract data for use is even more difficult. So on October, on April 30th, rather, the city issued a request for proposal for CRM software and implementation, which closed on May 21st. A total of 13 proposals were submitted and interviews, demonstrations and reference checks were completed for the shortlisted vendors. I'm pleased to provide the recommendation to council this evening that Motorola Solutions Canada with their Premier One CSR cloud solution was a successful proponent in our procurement process. Motorola Solutions has an exceptional track record and deep experience in implementing their solutions within the public sector. Their Premier One CSR solution is used by various cities and municipalities across North America. Most notably, the first 311 operation center in Canada to launch in 2005 was the city of Calgary, who continue to successfully use their solution today. They provide an unparalleled level of customer service and are committed to a strong working partnership. Motorola Solution is a cloud-based web application whereby software is accessed on a subscription basis and hosted by the provider as a service rather than purchased and installed on our infrastructure. Unlike other solutions, Motorola is responsible for all elements of the CRM implementation and ongoing support. This is their unique value proposition. Where other solutions require a consultant for implementation and various levels of agreements and payments for ongoing support with the software provider, Motorola Solution is one package with one point of contact. If approved, we will be working together with Motorola to deliver and implement the CRM solution with our aggressive timelines. Motorola support will continue after our December 1st go-live date, providing value for investment. To help visualize some of the capabilities of how the software works, I'll walk you through a quick sample case of how the citizen request can flow through the system. So it starts with a phone call, but this could also be a walk-in or an online form that will integrate with the system. So the citizen will be greeted by the frontline customer service experience representative asking, how can I help you? The customer reports that a tree is down in Rockwood Park and the customer experience rep searches through a service request in the system for fallen tree and pulls up the request form. Using scripted questions and prompts, the rep confirms required information with the customer. This can also include pinpointing on a map the exact location of that fallen tree, integrating with our existing GIS system on one easy-to-use interface. Once submitted, the representative can communicate expected service levels and turnaround times to the customer. For example, that the tree will be cleaned up within 24 hours. In addition, if citizens wish to receive standardized, pre-programmed updates, such as when the work is scheduled and complete, they can provide their email address. As a request progresses through the system and is routed through to the service areas, updates are emailed to the customer. In addition, workers in the field will have access to a simple intuitive app for use on smartphones that will allow them to check off the work when they're in the field. So specific features and functionality of Motorola's Premier One CSR solution includes a simple intuitive interface, including integrations with other systems like our GIS mapping, website, Microsoft Outlook and more. The system will be integrated with the future selected ERP system. In addition, a worker mobile application will allow for use of the system in the field. The ability to program reminders and built-in escalation. For example, if, if a task is not complete within defined time, reminders can be escalated to supervisors and managers. Reporting, dashboards and analytics are all built into the system with real-time reporting and measurement of performance. And finally, an indexed knowledge database to search content for frequently asked frontline questions provides right response at the frontline. With respect to our current telephone system, in the event of snowstorms, pandemics, emergency situations, employees are not able to work from home and take phone calls from citizens. In addition, we do not record calls for quality control or training purposes. For the replacement of our current system, we will be leveraging what we have to make it the most efficient cost and our recommended solution and details will be brought to council later this month. Preliminary operating budget for Service St. John includes wages and benefits for 10 full-time employees. As previously mentioned, employees will be reallocated from existing service areas, which is included in the overall corporate restructuring plan. Citizen services will be offset by savings and various service areas are reallocated. The most significant cost included in this line item is the annual licensing cost for the CRM software. The total operating budget for the Service St. John is anticipated to be approximately $942,000 with all costs being offset. The following breakout costs have been provided to outline the various reinvestments being made to facilitate the implementation of this new service area. The most significant cost is a one-time implementation of the CRM system at approximately $476,000. This will be paid using the approved capital budget allocated for the Enterprise Resource Planning ERP system. Typically, an ERP would have this functionality built in. Therefore, we are pulling this cost forward accordingly in advance of the procurement of the new ERP. The annual licensing cost at approximately $136,000 will be offset by savings and fleet management. The one-time implementation cost of a new phone system at approximately $6,000 is also offset by savings and annual telephone costs will simply be moved from the old system to the new. The monthly licensing costs associated with the telephone system at approximately $1,500 will simply be replacing our existing phone and solution costs. So an update on project progress. Since launch of the project in February, we have completed a significant amount of work to date within a short period of time. The project began with a detailed review of our current customer service status, best practices researched was conducted and tours of municipal spaces and services to Brunswick were completed pre-pandemic. With the help of various service areas across the organization and a working team, we have already begun to collect data that will be utilized in the CRM software and we have worked through process flows for the new front desk. Project next steps will include a variety of items and an incredible amount of work and details to iron it with various service areas. If approved this evening, we will begin working with Motorola to begin implementation. Governing documentation, including policy and procedures, will be completed. Training will be scheduled for frontline staff. And of course, a public communication strategy will be put in place for our go-live dates. For key milestones, we attended finance committee on July 23rd and received a positive endorsement for the overall model of Service SJ. Of course, we are here this evening at council to provide the same presentation and software recommendation. The telephone software solution will be brought forward to council later in August. Go-live launch dates will be October 5th and December 1st. October 5th will be phase one and includes the City Hall front desk for payments, questions and parking inquiries. Phase two launch will be December 1st and will include the CRM software go-live and one phone number access for citizens. It should be recognized with all aggressive timelines. There may be risks associated, however, we will work diligently to manage timelines. Finally, the recommendation is that the city enter into a three-year agreement with the option for two additional two-year extensions with Motorola Solutions Canada, Inc. for the CRM software and that mayor and common council will be authorized to execute the necessary contract documents. With that, I would be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Mort. Stop, stop sharing, please, so we can see the screen. Perfect, thank you. Okay, sorry, councillor, Mayor, if you, I'll get a list going here. Thank you. Councillor Mayor, if you kick us off, looks like almost everybody. Okay, councillor Mayor, if you go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Thank you very much. This, this did go through finance earlier this month and, or last month, I guess, and was recommended. But your worship, I wrote down a few words as I was listening to the presentation, you know? One member, one, one stop, integrated, new and improved, measured and tracked, training, fiscally responsible, value, consistency, closing the loop. This is just, this is just a great presentation, Ms. Van Mort, and I want to thank you for it. And a step really in the right direction. Our city, any city is a service organization and this goes a long ways to, to improving the service we have now. So look, I, I just think, you know, it's, it's kind of exciting. And as part of the finance team or committee, you know, I've, I've got to reiterate that there's really, besides some, some capital money, there's really, the operating money's all taken care of here. That's wonderful news. So what, what we're looking at is a new and improved system with the same kind of money and it will save money on this. We won't have to go around and round and round with our employees and citizens and council. And so this is just a great step. I want to thank you again and everyone else that was involved in it. Thank you, worship.
Councillor, would you like to move the recommendation so we have it on the floor? Thank you, moved and seconded by councillor Hickey. Thank you. Councillor Armstrong, I think I had you next and then I'll, I see you, David, councillor Armstrong. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was just looking at the service agreement. This is a lot of money and then, you know, with high tech and everything like that. It's not as good as the people that are behind, behind it as in anything. But my question is, we're paying $136,000 a year for St. John. Does Calvi pay the same amount of money? Just curious how they figure that out. We're paying 136 for 67,000 people. They got a million. Are they paying 136,000 a year too?
Through, through your worship to the councillor, the annual licensing costs are actually based off of the approximation of how many employees will be using the system. So I imagine that they would have more people in their contact center, more staff that would be using the system. So their costs, I would imagine, while I don't have the numbers in front of me and I don't know their exact cost for annual licensing would be, I imagine would be a lot higher. In addition, in those costs for licensing is included, is Motorola's continued support. So if we have any issues or we need to troubleshoot or we're looking to see if we can, you know, include additional functionality, we can reach out to them. That's not necessarily included with every solution that was submitted and reviewed through the procurement process.
So the licensing fee, you say 10 people, so it's $13,600 a year per person is what I, if I do the quick math, right?
Through your worship to the councillor, it's not necessarily just for the staff that are working in the contact center because remember, this will be routed through to the service areas. So there will be staff all over the organization that will be using this system. Of course, you'll have your core users. Of course, you'll have your core users that will be in the contact center and they'll be using it every day for walk in customers or phone calls coming in. But in addition, there'll be the workers in the field that will have access to that mobile application to be able to check off and say that work is done. And other managers within the organization will also have access to the data and information to, to run reports and analytics and things. So it's not simply just the, the group of 10. There's a number of staff that will have access to this across the organization.
Okay, just, just for my own, just so I know, say publicly, once you sign on to this thing, you're signed on for life. It's just like a liquor licensing deal. I have liquor systems myself. And you have licensing agreements. I either don't use the liquor system if I don't license it. That's all I'm saying. This could be the greatest system in the world. I hope it works out perfect. It saves us a bunch of money. It's above my pay grade how technical it is. But I'm saying we should understand, once we buy this system for half of me and the licensing, it doesn't matter. It's no good unless you have the licensing agreement with it to follow through for the next 10 years. I hope everything works out. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. You want to jump in?
Your worship, two very quick comments based on the, on the councillor's observations. The first one is one of the key users of this new software will actually be the management team. And I don't, I, I think it's important for us not to lose sight of that. We will, as the management team, be able to track how our organizations are doing in terms of their response times, their effectiveness at finding solutions, et cetera. So it's going to be very powerful in that regard. On the councillor's second point of we're, we're stuck with this for life, I think we will find much like a microwave oven. This is something that we wonder how we possibly did without it. And I do agree with the councillor that once we embrace this and use it to maximum effect, we will want something like this forever. However, technologies do change and that's why we've limited the term of this contract. Because it is conceivable that something better will come along down the road. But I have no doubt in my mind that we will continue to want to embrace a software solution to help us manage our customer service.
Thank you very much for that. I mean, I think it's a good investment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenzie.
Thank you, worship. I think it's a good investment too. And I think the customer service is key to a growing city. One thing I, I want to, I want to think about though is the workload doesn't change. And what I mean, Rachel, is that you know, I know somebody who put in a request two years ago to have something fixed. And it's on the queue and there's a lot of things that are more important than that and it's not going to change. So I don't think that the expectation should be that because we have a good customer service system that our boots on the ground are going to increase and work is going to get done quicker. Am I wrong there?
Through your worship to the councillor, to add to your question, it's, it's also a holistic approach too. So it's the training and the customer service that goes along with, with the culture, but you're right, your, your question is will the work get done quicker? Well, in the long term, I believe that there will be workflows that will be optimized and things will become more efficient. In addition to communicating where those things are in the queue. Right now, we may not have an accurate snapshot of where things are sitting. But the system will allow us to see where they're at, communicate where they're at. And in addition, the holistic approach will bring together training in addition with the use of the system.
So the, the people that are going to be doing this, they're coming from within the ranks now, right?
Yes, that's correct. So all of the, the frontline staff that will be staffing this contact center that will be located on the ground floor of city hall. In addition to our city hall, a new front desk where you can make payments, you can walk in and ask questions because they'll also have access to the system. That's being staffed using existing resources that are being reallocated from service areas.
So one of the things I've learned in my lifetime is you can have all kinds of great people, but they might not be in the best position. Right? So how do we choose the people that we want to be the face of the city of St. John? Is it by seniority? Is it by skill set? Is there an exam that they take? How do we do it?
So right now, the approach that we've taken is a lot of this, a lot of the employees that are going to be moved to the center, they're already in those frontline customer service positions. So what we're going to do is we're going to arm them with the skills and the training that they need to elevate and provide a level of consistency with customer service across the organization. In addition, right now, there may be staff that are in different locations across the city. And they might not have the synergy or the opportunity to debrief. By bringing all of these employees together in one group, you have the ability to not only have a variety in your work because they won't only be answering the phones all day, they'll have the opportunity to go work at the, the front desk and process payments and so forth. So it provides a bit of variety in their day and brings everyone together. And again, having that group together will create, is my goal, to create that culture of customer service and having it to be an extremely positive environment because these frontline positions are difficult. And you need the culture and you need the people and the training and the skills required to, to make it happen. So.
Oh, just two more quick ones. Are they going to be bilingual positions?
So 50% of the positions within the customer service center are required to be bilingual. So that it would be the goal that there would be somebody bilingual that would be available to answer any questions in the official second language.
Okay. And the last thing I'll say is I, I know more and more companies are going with the personal thing like, you know, I answer the phone, hi, my name is John, City's me, John, how can I help you? Not, hi, the city is St. John. Like, I'm not the city of St. John. I have a person, I have a name. And are we going to start to use that personal touch we're getting used to?
Absolutely. We'll be looking at best practices in customer service, not only within municipalities, but within the private sector too, to see what tools and approaches are best practice in customer service that we can leverage and pull into a municipal setting. So like you said, you know, having that personal touch and knowing who you're speaking with, the small things, we will try to incorporate into our everyday procedures.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I know you do a great job.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Reardon.
Thank you, worship. Rachel, just want to say it's another great project. What I love about your presentation is it kind of presents, it is a culture shift for starters. And, and this money that we're going to spend is just the infrastructure to support that. And it's that culture shift that's the huge thing for us. And your presentation kind of shows all the warts to the system that we have now that it's decentralized, there's no training, it's not standardized, we're not collecting data and all those other things. And then what it can be. And that customer service for anyone, everybody has experienced good and bad customer service. And no matter what they've done in the private sector as well. And great customer service is worth so much. And a lot of times people will go back to a, to a business because of great customer service. So I think this is a real growth in the shooter for us. And so I'm so happy to see it. And when I read through that presentation at finance meeting, I, I was kind of surprised that there was no, it was so decentralized and fragmented and no, no formal training with it because as you say, those are tough positions. And you need to know what you're doing and you need to be able to, as you say, close the loop for, for our citizens. And citizens want to be helpful. And when they're calling lots of times, they want to report things, et cetera. But if you don't get that loop closed at the end of the day, that satisfaction isn't there. So I'm thrilled to see it. You know, I just think it's great. I'm a hundred percent for it. Thanks so much.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor. Well said. Councillor Casey.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, it's going to be a, a great improvement over what we have. That's, that's for sure. I do have concerns over response times and, and staff getting to issues. Councillor McKenzie mentioned it. Yeah, just, you know, I, I don't want us to, you know, send an, send an email to a customer saying it'll be done in a week and two weeks later, it's, you know, some other priority came up and, and it's not done. So hopefully we can keep an eye on that.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hickey.
Thank you, worship. Rachel, I apologize if I missed this. Can you just clarify on what the difference would be between our service and a 311 operate, like an operation?
Certainly. Through your worship to the councillor. So our operation or what has been designed is essentially going to be the same, except perhaps in a larger city, the 311 operation number one, it would have the 311 phone number. So we will not have a 311 phone number, but we will have just one phone number to call, which is typically how these 311 projects start. They typically start with a central phone line and then they move into the 311 model. And in addition, so in the large city centers, you would likely have a fairly large contact center. And all of those staff, they would simply just answer the phones all day. With our model, the staff that will be answering the phones will also have the ability to work at the front desk and see customers in person, process payments, parking inquiries, things of that nature. You know, reception at that front desk. So we have a bit of variety built in as well. And that's also just to create a bigger pool of candidates because if you have somebody out or something for scheduling needs, it provides more flexibility. So those are probably the key pillars to what the differences would be, but it's essentially a 311 model without the 311 phone number.
And is it just the cost associated with the 311 that's the reason for steering away from it at the, at the starting point?
So as I mentioned, it does require regional collaboration. It's also understanding that, yeah, it's also my understanding that you need to look at the telephone poles, kind of where the calls are coming in and where they're bouncing from. And there are associated costs with that. So this is the first step. And certainly in future years, we can explore having a 311 phone number, but right now this is the first step. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I, I certainly know I'm, will have a lot more confidence in sending residents to the 4455 number. And certainly, you know, my, my hope is that it can, it can get councillors a little bit more out of the inner workings and of, of staff operations. And I know that tends to slow down efficiency as it directs, directs staff away from what they should be working on. Hopefully this will provide a more regimented foundational avenue for those inquiries. So that's, that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Well, thank you, worship. I think it's great. I think it's a great advancement for the city of St. John. But I do wonder, Rachel, you said there would be 10 people that would be trained and qualified to work on the front desk or in that area, however you're going to design that. Would they all work at the same time or are we working different hours on that? We wouldn't have 10 people taking payments, answering phone calls. Would, there wouldn't be 10 people there at the same time, would there?
So to dive a bit deeper into the staffing model that is proposed, it's 10 total. So with that, there is a manager that will oversee the entire operation. In addition, there's a professional, a management professional position that will liaise with the service areas to work on those service level agreements and like someone else had mentioned, ensuring that we're not communicating to customers that that fallen tree in Rockwood Park is going to be cleaned up within 24 hours and then happens a week later. There's constant communication, service level agreements and ongoing reporting analytics that need to happen with this to, to make it work. So that's two out of the 10. So then you're left with eight. There will be one position that will focus specifically on training and some of the higher level functions within the payments that will be processed at the front desk. So if somebody new is coming into the organization, they need to learn how to use this CRM system. In addition to customer service training and opportunities for such, so they'll have kind of elevated responsibilities within the center. The remaining seven, if you split that into two, you have three and four would be processing payments. So all of our water bill payments that come in, parking inquiries, reception at the front desk. In addition to phone calls, that is just going to be a one telephone number for city hall. That's the staffing model and it's fairly consistent with our neighbors, Frederton and Mountain. I think they're at around six or seven too, that are doing those core functions. In addition, we've been working with the service areas to identify non urgent administrative functions that can be completed within this service area during downtime. So if the phones aren't ringing or if customers aren't walking in or there aren't payments to be processed, what's that other work that they can dip into? Similarly, this is a starting point and the numbers are extremely close with other municipalities that are the same size. But if we need to adjust in the future, we can adjust. There's always that ability. There will always be lots of work to do. But this is a staffing model that we'll start with. So.
Okay. And then like after hours, will there still be people in that section or will, how do you term, how will you handle it like in the evenings and on the weekends? Will that number still be available?
So similarly to how service is provided after hours now, that will remain in force and effect as we move forward with this new model. Except that those after hours workers will have access to the system. There will be elevated training that will be done. But their focus is mostly reactionary. But similarly to how service is provided after hours now, it will remain, we will just work to bring it up to a, a new level, I guess.
And I know it's already been mentioned, but like part of the problems we have, and I understand them. You know, sometimes not all the questions and the concerns you get are easy. Some of them are more difficult and they're hard to do. And the city doesn't have a lot of resources. So sometimes we can't do everything that everybody wants us to do. And I think part of the, what happens when that happens, if this, that's a situation is that the customer, the citizen never gets a follow up, you know, they call in and they say, oh, well, you know, I got this hype for this issue or some issue, some difficult issue. My lawn was torn up when they did the road work or whatever, and then nobody follows up because, you know, they don't have the answer or they don't have a way of doing it. I'm hoping that this system will, like when you have a supervisor or whoever, then there must be some way we can follow up on that. I think that's one of our issues that are harder and that's sometimes why these councillors get involved is because they don't get any response, you know, from the city staff. And it's, then they call us and say, oh, you know, I called two weeks ago and nothing's happened and whatever. So I hope that we can do it somehow where you have it in a computer that they need to be followed up on and we need to do that a bit better. Not, we do it well many, many times, but sometimes we don't. Is that what I mean? You know what I'm, I like, and all the managers that have to make the decisions on this, on some of these issues, are they all going to be kind of tied into that department?
And through your worship to the deputy, there's also the ability within the CRM software to put in reminders. So perhaps somebody doesn't use email, but they would like a phone call back. Right now, that might just get lost on a piece of paper or a sticky note somewhere. Now that can be put into the system. In addition, you're asking about managers having access to the system. They'll have the data and the information in front of them and the ability to run reports. We will know our numbers and it won't take a significant amount of time to pull that information or it won't be done manually. So I think those address your concerns that you stated.
Oh, that's good. I hope, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a good, good step for everybody. So people just want to be answered, that's all.
Exactly. Thank you, deputy. Did I miss anyone? Our councillor Sullivan?
Thanks, worship. I guess most of my, most of my questions were asked by the other councillors. But I certainly want to throw my thank you behind this. It takes long overdue. And I think you've covered everything except the jingle for the phone number. So people can remember it, Rachel. So I'll throw the challenge out to our wonderful, talented St. John citizens. I'm talking to you, Chuck Teed. Do something with 6584455 so that everybody can remember it. I think the system is wonderful. I'm looking forward to the training. And especially just what the deputy mayor was talking about, the ability for the system to follow up and keep that communication because I really see the savings of staff being able to do the work that citizens want them to do and not be chasing each other because this will have us organized and communication will be improved. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, a couple of comments. First of all, very excited. It's hard to communicate, Ms. Van Wort, city manager, how monumental this night is. So, you know, it's a bit, not tongue in cheek, but it's 8:52 on August the 4th. And I'm hoping a moment or two here, council is going to endorse this investment in enhanced customer service. There's another date that I think is very important as well. There's another date that I think is very important as well. And that was on, that was in February of 2020. And Council, just remind you, that was the date when we, we agreed with the City Manager and his recommendation that, that Ms. Van Wart would become the Integrated Customer Service Manager. And I think we've just seen an example of a highly committed and dedicated and skilled manager in our organization, like, like many, many others that we have. Like you've hit it out of the park, Ms. Van Wart, with this project tonight. It's a game changer. To me, like you, Counselor Merrithew, I wrote down growth, productivity, effectiveness, efficiency, value, sustainability, proactive, citizen-focused, customer satisfaction, employee satisfaction. That's what we're talking about here. And it's a great example, City Manager, of redirecting dollars within our budget that will help us grow and thrive as a corporation. And I'm trying to keep all of this very excited and passionate and positive for a moment. Like, we don't know today. You know, we're, we've got lots of calls. People call the six, five, eight number, no jingle today, Counselor Sullivan. They call the number, they call us back, they call us again, they email us. And that's not a criticism, it just is our current state. And what you've, what you've put together here for us, Ms. Van Wart, is an opportunity for this city to become best of the best, leading class in terms of how we tackle our approach to customer service. I cannot wait City Managers to see the data, but this can start spitting out, because it will inform the decisions that we make as a corporation so that we can become more effective, more efficient, more productive, and spend our dollars differently. So I am so excited about this. I told you this after finance, Ms. Van Wart. You've, you know, you and your team have hit a home run. Of course, there's a tremendous amount of work moving forward between now and the end of the year. I hope you have the best of the best in these roles, because there is no more important role. And then I hope you also inform City Manager the culture as we, we just, all of us explain to Council and everyone else that touches customers how important this is. And I'll end with this. This is a game-changing project. Not only will it drive enhanced customer satisfaction through improved customer service, the data will drive efficiency and effectiveness within the organization, and that will help us grow and thrive. So I am, I, this is one of the best nights I have had as a member of this council that has driven growth, getting our finances in order, and provincial reforms since day one. Proud, proud, proud. Thank you. City Manager, over to you.
Your Worship, first of all, thank you for all those positive comments. Very much appreciated. I'm sure the staff appreciate it as well. I am concerned about a theme that was discussed this evening. And it's quite frankly, my own doing, because I did ask Rachel to identify the challenges we have in the current system. And we do have challenges in the current system. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that it's not for lack of trying. We have exceptional employees right now, working customer service. Whether it be the person answering the phone, or whether it be those frontline crews who go out and try to fix problems within limited resources, they are doing, in my opinion, the best they possibly can. We, regrettably, the system, have not set them up for the level of success that we want, we want to have. And that's what tonight is really all about. And I would hate for anybody who's listening to us here this evening to draw any sort of faulty conclusions about the quality of the people involved in customer service. We are all, all hundred some odd employees of the city focused on customer service. This will just be a quantum leap in terms of giving the tools necessary, not just the software, but the training and the processes and the procedures to take us to the next step. But again, I need to stress, the employees want to do this. Employees are focused on customer service, and they are doing their absolute best to try to deliver that. The other point that came out this evening, and it's absolutely true, is that we will be more effective. I think we will become more productive. We will get more work done, no doubt about it. However, there will still be instances where something that needs to be addressed may take a year before it is addressed, or two years, or five years, depending on capital budgets, depending on resource allocations, et cetera. The beauty about this system is we will be able to manage those expectations. And individuals who inquire about A, B, or C, will be able to be told categorically. This can be done right away. This will be done in two weeks. This will be done in two years. Or this will simply not see the light of day because we can't afford it. And we will be able to manage those expectations, because we will have the data to do so. But again, I'm concerned about the perception that all of a sudden, everything that's, uh, needs to be addressed in the city will be addressed quickly. That's simply not the case. We are still resource limited, as is any entity, corporation, private or public. Thank you, Your Worship.
Yeah, thank you. I just, the expectation management piece, I think, is critical, City Manager. And I, I think your comments were, were, were very well said. And if something's going to take a year or two, better for us to tell the citizen that, than tell them a week or two or three and, and cause constant dissatisfaction. But anyway, fantastic night, Ms. Van Wart. Thank you very much for your fantastic presentation and also your skill in answering all of the questions and the comments that we threw at you tonight. Thank you very much. Okay, exciting night, folks. The motion and the recommendations are on the floor, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary-minded? Okay, thank you. That is a unanimous vote for, for a great move forward in this organization. And thank you. And thank you, City Manager, for your leadership on this file as well. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is 12.4 on your agenda, and it's a report with respect to the demolition of a vacant, dilapidated, and dangerous building at 358 Union Street.
Thank you. City Manager, point of clarity, because I think it was, it was always Ms. Van Wart in the past. Are we, are we doing a quick summary, or are we simply addressing these issues in our kit? Oh, I see Mr. Willett is.
Your Worship, Mr. Willett will introduce it at the beginning, and then we have three files that will be briefed to you.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a quick briefing that I'll, or a statement that I'll read before any vote. Over to you, Mr. Willett.
Thank you. Through your worship to members of council, the next three items are demolition files for our vacant buildings program. The vacant building program was suspended in March, as you may remember, due to the COVID, due to COVID-19, and was recently restored on July 20th with the rehiring of our next presenter. Ben Purinton was our Vacant and Buildings Manager. Mr. Purinton is picking up right off, right where he left off in mid-March, when he issued a number of the notices to comply for dangerous and vacant buildings. Those notices have now expired, and three of those files are before you this evening for authority to demolish. We are extremely pleased the program is back up and running and that Ben has been able to move quickly to restore the program right away and build off of the momentum he'd already created earlier this year. Now, I'll hand it over to Ben to provide background in each one of these files.
Thank you, Commissioner Willett. Leading your worship and counselor, I will providing a brief overview for three files related to the Dangerous and Vacant Building Program that you have before you, items 12.4, 12.5, and 12.6 of the agenda. Getting with items 12.4, the property at 358 Union Street is a three-story, two-unit apartment building located in the city's south-central peninsula. Building is a hazard to the public by reason of being vacant and by reason of dilapidation. Registered owners of the property have passed away interstate, and the property has been abandoned since. Staff recommendation for the building is demolition. The following photographs of the building's condition can be found in pages 563 to 572 of the council packet. And I'll share my screen. This is the front of the building and the rear. This is the main floor. And the basement. Another shot of the main floor. And the top floor.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just deal with this, this particular item. I'll just read a, a statement first. The information which has been provided in the council kit includes the report of the building inspector stating that the building located at, excuse me for one second, 358 Union Street, PID 00017731, is a hazard to the safety of the public by virtue of its being, amongst other things, dilapidated and structurally unsound. And we did advertise, Council, so you know, is the, if there was anyone present and owner, including anyone holding any encumbrance upon this property, was to present evidence in the contrary, i.e. that the building is structurally sound and not dilapidated, and nobody registered to do so. Okay, thank you. We have a mover for the recommendation, Counselor Reardon, thank you. And seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. Any questions or comments on the file? Thank you, Kenneth Reardon.
Thank you, Worship. Ben, I'm just, I just want to state that we have Thomas Curran in Margaret Kearney as the owners. This is, do we?
Correct. It's the estate of Margaret Kearney.
It's Kearney, it's always the estate of her. I thought you said, I didn't see that in my kit. The other question I had is, do you have, is, in my kit, is, I didn't see it. Is there an assessed value for that property?
Through your worship to the counselor, the assessment data was not included in the packet. However, I do have it. It is, the assessment data is, it's assessed at $137,000.
$137,000, okay. Because it's going to be worth a lot less once we take the building down and so it reduces our, our income on it. I, I mean, it's a good thing. I'm going to support this, obviously. And I've noticed, you know, I've been in, been into a place similar to that. And what happens when they're open like that is animals, of course. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Nice to see you back and nice to see the program started again.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Well, I can tell you, there's been no assessor in that building at a, an assessment of $137,000. Okay, the recommendation is on the floor, and I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary-minded? Thank you. The motion is carried. Next item?
Next item is 12.5, demolition of a building at 98 to 100 Victoria Street.
Thank you. Back to you, Ben.
Your worship and counselors, 98 to 100 Victoria Street is a three-story, three-bedroom building located in the city's north end. The building is a hazard to the safety of the public by reason of being vacant and by reason of dilapidation, as well as by reason of unsoundness of structural strength. Control of the property was passed from the registered owner to a trustee through the bankruptcy process in 2016. Despite numerous attempts, staff has been unable to contact the trustee throughout the enforcement process. However, on Friday, the trustee contacted staff stating that they have found a potential buyer for the property. There's currently no valid purchase and sale agreement between the buyer and the trustee, and the buyer could not provide concrete plans for the property at this time. Due to this, staff recommendation for the building is to proceed with demolition. However, the demolition may not be done immediately while staff gets more information about the potential sale. Staff will require very concrete plans and quick turnaround times in order for the demolition to be put on hold.
Okay, thank you.
Of the building's condition can be found in pages 599 to 609 of the council packet.
Okay, thank you. I think we, are you going to share that? Okay.
And this is the front of the building. And the rear. The main floor. The top floor. And the basement.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Again, Council, normally in our, our council meetings in a chamber, I would read the statement. We did invite those having an encumbrance in the building to come forward. No one did. As Ben just mentioned, there was a late call. So certainly, the individual can work with our building inspection team, but the recommendation stands. So looking to get the recommendation on the floor, moved by the deputy. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Merrithew. Any questions, comments on, thank you again, Counselor Reardon, kick us off? Yeah, I see Counselor.
Thank you, Worship. Ben, I'm just curious about this one as well. What would the assessed value of that one be?
Through your worship to the counselor, the property is assessed at $4,100.
$4,100?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we can't even get any water off of it because there's no one living there. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. Comment?
Oh, yes, Your Worship. But I was going to say, that building isn't worth any more than $5,000. And I'm not sure who said that they had a buyer for it. I, I'm afraid that if we let this go and it gets sold, it's going to sit there like that for a long, long time. I would be very careful with this one. The person that owns that one, I'm going to have to go there. I just, I, I don't want it to be integrated. So whatever, in the dance of the good policy, maybe one day it's, no, that, that is a definite hazard. Not a, area with fire, but whatever, burn, it's a bad spot. Right next to it, one of the employees there, a couple weeks ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're having a bit of a hard time hearing you, Counselor, but I think your, your point, if I could just try to capture it, was A, the building's in very, very rough shape. It's a hazard to the community. It's a hazard to our responders. And I think your message you were sending to Ms. Purinton, Mr. Purinton, and to Ms. Poffenroth and so on is, let's not get dislaid away by, by hope. There, there better be a very, very solid plan, and let's stick to our plan. So is that summary of your message?
And a very tight timeline for that plan. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Okay, thanks. And I think to summarize very quickly for me on all these buildings tonight, boy, if there isn't a case for change, and I mean, to the systemic challenges that we face, provincial reforms like taxation, I think these buildings represent, prevent a massive need for significant change. So, okay, thank you. The recommendation is on the floor, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary-minded? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item, Compton? Sorry.
Sorry about that, Your Worship, technical difficulty. 12.7, or 12.6, sorry, demolition of vacant building at 111 to 115 City Road.
Thank you. Ben?
Your worship and counselors, the property at 111 to 115 City Road is a three-story commercial building located in the city's south-central peninsula. Building is a hazard to the safety of the public by reason of being vacant, by reason of dilapidation, and by reason of unsoundness of structural strength. Despite numerous attempts, staff has been unable to contact the registered owner of the property, property through the enforcement process. It's suspected that the property has been abandoned. Staff recommendation for the building is demolition. The following photographs of the building's condition can be found in pages 635 to 649 of the council packet. This is the front of the building. This is the right side of City Road Bakery. And the rear. This is the interior of the BJ's Lounge portion of the building. This is the upper floor above BJ's Lounge. And the interior of the City Road Bakery.
Okay, again, folks, normally we'd read out the statement. No, no one has stepped forward to come and, and claim, claim any ownership to this particular building, whether they have an encumbrance or not. So we have a recommendation. Do I have a mover of the recommendation? Counselor Hickey, thank you. Seconded by the Deputy, Deputy Mayor. Any questions, comments, Counselor Reardon? And I'll come to you, Counselor Merrithew, Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, Worship. Ben, this is owned by a numbered company. Is there a way for us, for the public, to find out who is that numbered company? I hate that in a way, because you hide behind those numbers.
Through your worship to the counselor, the information is publicly available through Corporate Affairs on Service MD.
Okay. And what's the value of this place's assessed value?
Through your worship to the counselor, the property is assessed at $204,000.
It's a significant piece of property though, too. All right. Thank you, Ben. Great.
Thank you, Counselor Merrithew.
Counselor Reardon, got most of the question. Ben, can we, if there are presentations, can we put owners of numbered companies in the, in the, in the packet? in the, in the packet?
Uh, through you, your worship, to the councillor, uh, we are required to list the, uh, the company, the registered company, uh, since they are the owner, we're not allowed to, to list the, uh, director of the company.
Very well, thanks, Ben, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, Ben, um, interesting, so assessed at two hundred and four thousand dollars, do we know if, uh, do we know if the taxes are paid up to date on that property?
Uh, your worship, they're not.
Pardon?
They are not being paid.
And, and do we know how far in arrears the taxes are in that property?
Um, your worship, I, I'm, can I remember the exact number, however, it was around sixty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
Okay, yeah, so I guess what I'm getting at is, is, uh, we have a building assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, it would have a tax, so, so that's, uh, that's five, six, seven years of unpaid taxes on that building.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you, again, it just illustrates the, uh, the need for fundamental, fundamental change to nineteen-sixties tax laws that, that are broken, you know, that's why tax reform is our number one, uh, provincial, uh, policy reform, so, okay, thank you, uh, thank you for the work, um, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone country-minded? Motion is carried, yeah, Ben, thank you, welcome back, uh, to the, to you, to the public, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of information here of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Purinton and his colleagues, uh, who work on these files, uh, day in and day out, so we do thank you for cleaning up our city and making it safer, and, uh, let's keep going, so thank you very much. Next item, common clerk.
Next item is twelve point seven on your agenda, and it's the staff report regarding twenty to twenty-two-one arena ice rental rates, flash sales, and allocation policy.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hugenholz, please.
Uh, good evening, your worship, uh, my webcam is malfunctioning, so unfortunately I can't turn it on at this time. Um, as, uh, Mr. O'Reilly prepares his presentation, I just had a few introductory comments. Uh, council recall in December two thousand and nineteen approving the rec subsidy policy. We are back now for approval of the rental rates for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one season in line with this policy, uh, as well, there are some changes to the ice allocation policy, uh, and a new approach to sell unbooked ice times in an attempt to maximize our revenues. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner O'Reilly.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, so common council and your worship, uh, the recommendations in the report this evening are based on the recreation subsidy policies the council approved back in December of last year. These policies focus on subsidizing only St. John resident participants of some sports from city tax, city taxpayer funds by recovering only percentage of operating costs from these participants. Uh, the remaining level of cost come from taxpayers, and I'll point out that city taxpayers cover the hundred percent of capital investment of these facilities as they are needed. These policies also support subsidizing tournaments and teams associated, associated with educational institutes. The estimated revenues from pursuing these cost recovery targets are also incorporated into the sustainability plan for years twenty-one and twenty-two that common council has approved back in May of this year. This upcoming race season is to be the first season where the subsidization policies are going to be implemented, uh, this would have been challenging enough by itself. Um, however, we also needed to factor in the decision to close the Hilton Billy Arena. This decision, again, as part of the city's approved two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two sustainability plan, is introducing financial savings to the city for these two years, while also having an impact on our supply and demand calculations, which are a significant portion of how we calculate and implement our recreation subsidization policies. On top of this, uh, COVID-nineteen is expected to play a significant part in how we operate arenas for this coming season, impacts of which, of course, are not currently known, and of course, are just another layer of, of challenge as we, uh, prepare for the upcoming Achieving the approved subsidization policies and associated cost recovery targets is owing to result in greater hourly rates, uh, for our arena users. We wanted to be fully transparent with the community early when these policies were approved back in December. This table on the screen, it shows the scale of the average hourly rental rates needed to, um, achieve these adopted policies, was both presented in open session at council back in December of two thousand and nineteen, and was also presented in January of this year, uh, to one of two consultation sessions held this year with, um, ice sport user groups and other groups within the city. Although the rates being recommended to council this evening are greater than previous years, we have attempted to communicate over the last six months, the scale of the increase that is being considered, to help acclimatize the community to the required changes to meet the sustainability targets for the next two years. Uh, knowing the increase in rates, uh, we're going to be, we're going to be, uh, uh, significant, uh, similar way as to how we implemented, uh, field rates, uh, rates for sports fields over two years, we are recommending an incremental increase in cost recovery targets for arenas with full implementation for the year two thousand and twenty-two. The incremental plan for arenas would take two seasons, with recovery percentage for each season up on the screen, uh, before you now. Our recommended hourly rates for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one season, which are part of this report, are based on the recovery percentages in the first column of this table. As an example, a city taxpayer is still expected to subsidize forty-six percent of the operating costs for youth participants in ice sports, uh, for this coming season, um, with council's endorsement of the rate this evening. As staff, we put a lot of focus into developing, communicating, and planning to implement the recreation subsidy policies, including at the regional level. However, we've also not taken our eye off initiatives that allow arenas to continue to be more affordable, uh, for the benefit of both sports participants and our city taxpayers generally. We've placed focus on reducing our operating costs, such as last season implementing a new shift structure for our employees, resulting in a twenty-five percent reduction in staff required in each one of our, uh, four arenas at the time. Um, the city's recently approved arenas rightsizing plan with the closure of the Hilton Billy Arena also results in further labor, uh, savings as well as goods and services savings. On the revenue side, again, besides hourly rate adjustments to line of council policy, we have tightened our cancellation policies, uh, that we, we use with user groups. We are continuing to find new uses for arena facilities, even in some cases, the parking lots outside for revenue generating, and we have a new proposal, uh, before this evening to fill up unsold ice mid-season, which I'll talk about in a, in a couple of slides. All these initiatives result in further savings to our taxpayers while mitigating hourly rate increases needed from our user groups to accommodate the new policies. For example, in two thousand and eighteen, when we first started discussing cost recovery targets with user groups, we'd estimate at the time a full cost recovery prime rate of around three hundred and fifty dollars an hour before taxes. We are now down to about three hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, and this is expected to decrease as time goes on, as we implement more and more continuous improvement initiatives. On the screen now are the arena rates we're recommending to council for approval this evening. These rates are based on the incremental cost recovery targets for the season I discussed a few slides ago, and are in line with a fully achieving council's policies in the subsequent two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, two, twenty-two season. I added the lower table on the screen, uh, just today, uh, these rates are from various municipalities from the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen arena season, which we collected and reported on about this time last year to council. This just gives an indication of how our rates compare to those around us, uh, just to show some context. Um, and just to note, uh, these all locations are obviously outside our region, uh, within various parts of Atlantic Canyon. As you can see, some rates are above and below that two hundred dollar per hour mark, and some of the rates that we're looking to be in approval on this evening for the season are again, above and below that two hundred dollar per hour mark. Uh, typically, after our seasonal requests are accommodating, accommodated at the beginning of each season, we are left with sporadic unrented ice. Most of these ice times are not in high demand. City staff currently does not have the flexibility to attempt to book this unused ice, uh, then to apply the approved, uh, rates, um, the council approves each year. This often results in lost revenue opportunities for the season, for the city. We're proposing this evening to council to provide some flexibility to city staff for these, uh, unbooked, um, sporadic ice times. The intent is, we would place some of these unbooked ice times in the package, uh, packages, advertise these packages in a transparent and competitive process, to attempt to sell these, uh, ice slots, uh, to the highest bidder. Uh, these packages will be at the discretion of city staff, very similar to how other industries have seat sales for in-season or, or short-term sales. The closure of the Billy Arena and COVID-nineteen are expected to have different impacts on demand for ice for the upcoming season, uh, but we still want to be in a position at this point to have the approval of council for this flash sale option, um, if that sporadic ice, uh, continues into this coming season. Uh, before each arena season, the city requests and then allocates seasonal ice to our various ice groups. These user groups receive the advantage of essentially a blank, blank slate in our schedule the upcoming season, so they can finalize their programming for the season, without having to schedule around people who book before them. In return for booking within this blank, blank slate of, of ice time, uh, these groups agree to abide by our council-approved ice allocation policy, so we can balance several competing factors, early interest apparently, such as provisional ice times for youth and recreational-based user groups, when different groups want, uh, similar times, and that does happen from time to time. Depicted version of this policy, which is attached to the staff report, uh, we are seeking a council approval on this evening. There are five main changes to this updated policy, uh, two of them are clarifications around which types of user groups fit into which categories within our ice allocation plan. We're also looking to, to do more, um, mitigate instances of council ice after groups request it during the season, um, including ensuring groups who want more ice than previous season have to justify it, to ensure that I will turn around and cancel it, and we are preventing groups from booking a lot of ice and sporadically, um, canceling time, uh, with, within the season. All these issues, um, caused that open ice that we can't, uh, then book for, for the future. Uh, we were asked during the recent group consultations with user groups to extend the cancellation win, window within our policy, given the uncertainties around COVID-nineteen, and as staff, we are supportive of this change, and we're seeking a, a two-week extension into, uh, the end of October, for groups to actually cancel their, their ice. Uh, we see it's the second recommendation or second suggestion from groups to have two different ice allocation times within a season, uh, we are, uh, recommending as staff, we stick to that one time, which is, uh, which is before the season starts, um, to ensure we, we know how our rings need to operate, uh, for the coming season. Um, I'll point out, which I pointed out to the user groups, that groups are always able to book more time after the seasonal ice, uh, process is complete, um, and wants to have more clarification around the needs for, with COVID-nineteen. Um, we remain proud of staff that we have openly and transparently consulted with user groups over the last few years, uh, through some very difficult subjects. Our consultations have led to instances where our staff recommendations to council have strengthened and changed before we, we approach council. As mentioned, we've consulted twice with ice user groups in the last six months. Of course, COVID-nineteen is weighing heavily on their minds, as it's weighing heavily on our minds, um, especially for the user groups, um, the compounding impact of the rates which we're recommending this evening. Um, there are some concerns around the proposed rates for tournaments, um, uh, that we're, we're looking to, to, to charge. I will point out that these rates for tournaments are also in line with the council approved policies. Uh, we are in agreement with, uh, the cancellation deadline being extended by two weeks at the request account of these, of these groups, um, but we are recommending to hold firm on the one seasonal booking process, uh, before the season starts, which is actually going to start in a couple of weeks, with the support of council this evening. Um, we also discussed during both the January and July consultation session, ways in which the city can work together with these user groups to ensure city taxpayer subsidies are invested in ice sport participants of these groups to our city residents. A solution to achieve the subsidization is needed to fully align with council through recreation subsidy policies. The main challenge with their solutions that are, uh, uh, St. John only solutions, is that our financial relationship are with the user groups and not the individual participants, and we do that through the rates that are charging. Um, clearly, a St. John only options, uh, that are available to us, such as recreation cards, which we tried to implement last season, um, or a form of rebate back to residents after we charged full cost recovery, creates both risks and burdens to both the city and these various user groups. We have heard this louder, louder and clear, including in our most recent consultations over the last couple of weeks. Uh, there is a more effective way. Um, a regional approach through a cost-sharing model is that effective way, um, essentially the same goal, being taxpayer subsidies aligned with regional use, can also be achieved through regional cooperation, um, but in this case, for all regional taxpayers and all regional ice sport participants, instead of just focusing on St. John. With the new financial relationship being between the regional municipalities and LSTs within our region, through a cost-sharing model, there's no longer a need for a new financial relationship with user groups or the individual participants, which again created that risk and burden situation, um, with those particular options. There's yet to be success in agreeing to regional cost-sharing model for arenas or recreation generally, but there are new positive developments that could encourage region to come together again, including the region, recent, um, um, regional agreement on economic development, uh, the city's rightsizing efforts around its arenas, which has been a concern within the region, um, and a recent commitment to pursue comprehensive ice strategy, uh, in year two thousand and twenty-one. In line with council policies, we do need to find a way to ensure taxpayers, uh, fund only city resident participants', uh, use of arenas, but between the need to continue to narrow in on an effective solution, if we need a St. John only solution, um, and the encouragement of some of the recent, uh, um, uh, benefits and support around regional cooperation, city staff has recommended to delay a St. John only solution for only one year for this upcoming two thousand and twenty-one season. But, um, if we don't find that regional solution, uh, city staff will be back to council to seek, uh, endorsement of a St. John only solution, again, without the success being in place. A cost-sharing model, uh, doesn't need to be overly complicated. Essentially, we agree that eight, eight arenas in the region, the four in St. John, including the LBR, the two in Chris Pam Sis, the one in Rossi, the one in Granby Westfield, are all considered regional arenas. Uh, we agree on an assumed current level of taxpayer subsidization per arena, uh, the suggestion there is a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand of taxpayer subsidies per arena, based on the scan of arenas within the region. We then calculate the usage of all these arenas by participants in each municipality and LSC, to develop a proportion of usage from each jurisdiction. The proportion of usage is then, uh, redistributes the overall subsidy of these eight arenas, so eight times a hundred and ninety thousand is one point five two million. Then the required subsidization based on proportion of usage is compared to the current subsidization levels, and there's, and there's any variance between those, uh, that goes into the cost-sharing model in terms of exchange of funds, uh, between the municipalities and LSTs. This is just a simple illustrative example as to how those calculations would work in real life, um, and, and this example is in your kit, um, uh, within the report itself with more details around it. Again, it's just a matter of redistributing, uh, taxpayer subsidization based on usage instead of how many arenas are in a particular community. Uh, the recommendations before this evening, uh, we have three specific ones, uh, to approve, to approve the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one arena rates that are within the report, endorse our notion of a flash ice sales, uh, for that mid-season empty ice which may occur, and approve the amended ice allocation policy, this also packed the report. Although we're not looking for a specific resolution for city staff's proposed plan related to regional cooperation, uh, we would be interested in understanding council's direction and our proposed approach. And just to note, uh, both the approach and the cost-sharing model discussed this evening, um, have also been discussed numerous times, uh, with council, um, and you've been supportive of this, um, over at least a year period of time. And with that, your worship, I'll stop sharing my screen, and if there's, uh, any questions or comments, be happy to take those.
Okay, perfect, thank you, city manager first, thank you.
Uh, your worship, members of council, just a, a point of clarity again, for our viewing audience, uh, the last part of that presentation where we spoke about a regional cost-sharing model, it is very important to recognize that that is nothing but a proposal, it's a way of doing it, it's not the only way of doing it, but we thought, thought it was important to make council and the public aware that there are options, indeed, where a regional cost-sharing model could be pursued. Uh, we believe that, uh, it is worth, uh, the time and effort to try again. We believe that it is worth the time and effort to try again in that regard. Before we go with the St. John only model, but I just wanted to stress. That this is not a model that's been approved by the region, not at all. This is just illustrative of a possible solution to achieve regional cost-sharing when it comes to arenas. Thank you.
City managers, before we open this up, is it fair to say, so I thank you for your comments. But I think that building on the economic development framework. But when I go back to arenas, because I was in the room for many of those conversations as well. We have taken some major steps in terms of, you know, downsizing by one arena. By looking for efficiencies, by trying to come to some agreement for standardized costs. So I think some of the legwork, I think, has been done. We are further down the road than we were a year ago. Is that a fair characterization?
Your worship, it is indeed a fair characterization. I'd say there's quite a bit of work that has been done. Understanding costs, understanding why there's differences in costs amongst the different arenas. Recognizing that we will never get to one model for the operation of all arenas. So let's just agree on standard subsidization costs or deficit costs, et cetera. So yes, there has been quite a bit of work done. There's certainly more awareness in the region now than there ever has been. On what we are talking about when we speak about a regionalized strategy. The question will be over the coming months, whether through discussion and collaboration, we can get to a solution of a regional cost strategy. Or whether we will have to come back to council with what we recognize as a divisive issue. But at the end of the day, the mandate of council is quite clear and certainly supported by staff. That sooner or later, St. John residents have to stop subsidizing non-St. John residents for the use of our sports facilities. And we are working very hard to try to get there from here.
Okay, perfect. Can we just, I see you deputy, but can we just start by getting the recommendation on the floor and then we can have discussion with that? Counselor Hickey, move. Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Sorry, I've got a mover and Counselor Hickey. Sorry, I think you're seconding deputy mayor.
We get it on the floor.
Okay.
I need to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead, deputy. Thank you. Seconded by the deputy.
I just think it's more complicated as we go forward and. So now, I want to talk a little bit or just have it explained to me about this $190,000. Do the other municipalities, do they subsidize their hockey players? Or are we the only municipality that subsidizes?
City manager, I need to start this. Again, I would ask council not at all this evening to get focused on our proposed illustrative example about how regional cost sharing could happen. And that $190,000 figure is just part of that model. To your question, every arena runs a deficit of some sort. How they cover that deficit is different among the various municipalities. But please, again, I just need to stress, don't get focused on that illustrative example at the back end. It is nothing but an illustrative example.
Well, okay, okay. But I just want to say something about this subsidizing. Like years and years ago, I guess the city started subsidizing hockey. I don't think it's necessary today. Because if there's any young person today in the city of St. John that cannot afford to play hockey on their own. We have pro sports. We have all kinds of organizations that give money and I don't. We don't subsidize anything else for anybody else and we are getting criticized for that. Because we subsidize hockey. We don't subsidize anything else regardless of how old you are. So I don't know why we continue to subsidize hockey. That's, I need to tell you that point. Because right now, we have to watch all the money that we spend. So if we're not treating everyone fairly, it's actually wrong to subsidize one sport and not all the other sport. And people of all ages. I need to say that because that's kind of where I'm coming from. But then my next question is on your, on these, on this youth that come in from the other areas like any other place in St. John. If they belong, what you're saying in this recommendation, if they belong to a group. That I guess say, I'm using this as an example that started in Grand Bay or in Rossi. If they belong to that group. Instead of us having this non-residential ID for each player. You're now going to ask the group to pay extra money? Is that what I'm understanding? Because that's what I've been told and I'm trying to get this straightened out in my mind. How are we this year with the rates that we're putting in place? How are we, are we making any difference between the youth from the city of St. John? To the youth from other municipalities? Is there any difference in the rates to the different teams?
Okay.
Your worship, to the deputy mayor, a point of clarification. We do not just subsidize arena. We also subsidize all sports fields within the city of St. John. And both of those decisions are based on a recommendation to council of December 2019. With what the subsidization rates should be moving forward. And that is the direction that we are working on when we provide you hourly rates this evening. On your second question. Everyone is charged a rate based on the category they are in. So you use your specific example, the people you were quoting are in the youth rate. And whether they are a resident of St. John, Chris Pam Sis, Rossi, Grand Bay Westfield, or an LSD, it does not matter. Their association is charged the youth rate. We are suggesting that making the differentiation between residents and non-residents. We want to wait one more year because we want to give one more try to trying to find a regional cost-sharing solution to this. So for this coming year, our rates are based on category, not on residential location.
Okay, so that's clear. Doesn't matter who you are, where you live, you're paying the same rate.
That's correct.
And then what about the way? So do we have to return money to citizens in St. John because they're subsidized?
No.
Or no?
We are subsidizing our operations of the arenas. Again, for this year, we care not where the users are coming from.
So there's no monies that are being collected upfront and then returned back?
No, there are not.
And are the rates in our arenas, the three that we have left? Are they pretty much the same as the LBR? So if you had a game tonight at the LB, you'd just be allowed to play at the LBR if they had the time? Are they doing the same rules as our own arena?
Yeah. Currently, deputy mayor, the rates that are charged by the arena, LBR arena are set by the LBR board. They are set independently of the city of St. John at present time. Their rate a couple of years ago was approximately $190 an hour for the prime rate. Before taxes, I don't know what it is for this coming season.
All right. So no, so everybody should be happy this year then. There shouldn't be any any upset from any one group because everybody's going to be treated the same. And everybody's going to get a fair rate. They know what the rates are. So I won't hear anybody saying to me that they're fair enough for the season. Is that right?
Well, the rates themselves are going up from the years past. In order to achieve those subsidy policies, they are going up. So certainly that was one concern that we heard from the user groups is the increase in rates from previous years. So certainly during consultations, that was one concern we heard. I simply want to provide on one of the earlier screens, some comparisons of those around us from Atlantic Canada. In terms of how they compare for those rates compared to ours.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Reilly, isn't it as simple as this? In December 16th of 2019, this council said, here's our new recreational subsidization policies. And we're here today on August the 4th saying, would you like us to recommend the policies that you approved last December? Is that a summary of where we are?
That's a summary that we're going to do incrementally over two seasons to put our way into those rates. And as we've been said in our presentation, we still need to find a solution one way or the other. To ensure those subsidies go to our city participants.
And we're going to go back to the table and try and get that done in 2020 or for 21. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, worship. I just put my two cents in. I'm going to endorse this plan. The rates are set. Like we said, you just said, mayor, we put the policy in place. You're getting rid of this fiasco about user fees outside the city. There's no bone of contention here. Should people pay more from outside? Yes. But we're getting rid of that. This is a very simple policy. And I'll say one thing, you'll find out at the end of this 21 season. Now, you're going to find out privatization of the rink is going to be the best bet for St. John New Brunswick. And it will look after everybody. And we might have a rink of our own that we can use for the poor people. But privatization, I believe, is where it should go. And if we have a rink for ourselves, we can subsidize or decide then. But I like this policy. I know the rates have gone up. And there's going to be some crying, but that's the reality we are in. And I think it's a good policy that's come forward. Set the rate, we stick our guns. And in a year from now, it'll come back with the information in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, worship. Certainly following through on the plan on our, on our levels of subsidization is key. I really like the fact that we have that for-profit versus nonprofit. Because there is absolutely no way we should be subsidizing anybody who's renting ice to make money. So that takes that and that also covers people living in the city. Or I'm very much aware that many of the folks and I would, my rough estimate would probably say half or more. Of the, those involved in those for-profit enterprises are likely not St. John residents. So that takes care of that because they're paying full rate. Is that right, Mr. O'Reilly?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's really important. So what we're talking about is subsidizing nonprofit groups. I am disappointed that we're still using taxpayer money to subsidize non-taxpayers, but I do understand it continues to be a work in progress. And we've got to keep moving down that road. I think we do, and we did it in our previous resolution, decide what's an appropriate level of subsidization for youth. If you look at every other sport, whether it's city-controlled through fields or rinks. Or outside of city-controlled private golf courses and curling clubs and everything else. Youth have a subsidized rate. And I think that's important. Because it's important that's where you build habits is in your youth. So other than still working on that residential piece. I think continuing to move down the rate road. Well done. The flash sale, we need, we've talked about this in a few previous things that we've worked on in the city. We need to be more flexible. We need to be more nimble. I know it wasn't that long ago and I was still doing a lot of coaching of hockey in the wintertime. And the folks at RNS had me on an email list. And every week, me and probably 100 other people got a list of what available ice they had that week. And it was first come, first served to go pick up the extra ice. I am so glad to see that in this report. Because I think one of the complaints I've heard is there's empty ice and people just didn't know. And I know that a lot of people will pick up that empty ice and that revenue will certainly help. So kudos to that. And so overall, I think we need to continue. I think the conversations. I've had conversations with ice people, more particularly hockey. So to Tim, to you and the staff that go into that lion's den regularly to continue keeping those communication lines open. That is so important and key that I know that a lot of things that are in this report. People who are going to those meetings see their opinions reflected. So thank you for that. As an ice guy, I think this is pretty good. Keep working on that residential piece. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, oh, thank you, Counselor Reardon and then Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, worship. Tim, I've just got a couple of questions. The flash sale, will you be chasing that or putting it out there like Counselor Sullivan said? Or will it just be you have some flexibility to do it? I like, you know, and I know that the Qplex has a text out there. There are leftover time or extra time and try to drive sales with that. So is that the intention with your flash program?
That's the intention. So we're planning to package a certain amount of this unused ice into do a package sale. And then to advertise that out to anybody who wants to bid on it. And again, to be competitive at the discretion of city staff. And the highest bid for that ice will, ice package, we'll get it. That's the intent.
Okay.
To chase that open ice.
Yeah, I want you to chase those sales. Exactly. On page seven of your report of your presentation, you had recommended 2021 rates. And at the bottom of your slide, it had a comparison to Halifax and some freight. I don't have that slide. So and you said that the rates are around $200 an hour, give or take. So we'll be going to 289, I'm treating my slides here, for primetime. So would that still be? So that, would that still be, yeah, that one. I have that slide, but I don't have that bottom bar. I don't have So, so we're going to be going to 289 for primetime. We talked about other, no, I guess it won't be. I, I'm just wondering, if we'll get back of how my ice time product is renting now. And then once we go to our rates, will we be looking at what the uptake is? I mean, we talked about closing one rink. We don't, you know, do we have enough for three rinks? So will we be monitoring that to look at maybe closing another rink? I mean, I don't know if the rink business is for me or not.
Just, your worship, just before Mr. O'Reilly answers that question, just for clarity so that you don't believe Mr. O'Reilly is doing things last minute. It's actually me today. Asked him to put in the comparative bar at the bottom and he did recognize in his briefing that this is new information to you. We apologize at its last minute, but it was to try to give you some sort of comparison to our to other regions, other cities. When you focus in on our primetime rate, please do not focus in on the 289. That is the for-profit value. But if you take a look at our others for youth and for seniors and even to a degree for adults. The comparative bar at the bottom basically says, we are not out of whack. With, and I know that's a terribly scientific phrase. We are not out of whack with the other cities within the, within the Atlantic Canada.
Okay, I'm going to go to the for-profit. Would St. John for-profit within the city, would that be prioritized when you're assigning that rink ice time? So.
Yeah. So our highest priority for ice allocation is always to the recreational-based, youth-based groups. Okay. So those are the groups that we provide ice to first. The lowest priority is actually those for-profit groups. And that kind of, if it allowed me to segue a bit, and I had this conversation with council a few weeks ago on this. The way we allocate ice in the city of St. John, a little bit counterintuitive to a good financial model. So we actually provide the best ice in the city of St. John to the groups who pay the least amount. But we do that purposefully through council policy because we believe so heavily in providing that opportunity for for ice sports to recreational-based groups and youth-based groups. But if you looked at it from a purely financial perspective, it would make a lot more sense. We give the better ice to those groups who pay more. It's a supply and demand issue. So again, when we compare the models of which we provide ice in the city of St. John. We have to take all those considerations as factors. Again, from a pure business perspective. If we were running a rink, you would rent the ice to the groups who pay the highest. That's not the way we do it. Provide the best ice to youth-based, recreational-based groups would have to be the groups who pay those.
So Tim, have we already sold some? So Tim, has, have we already sold some ice for this coming, coming fall? I mean, I think there's some of the rinks outside of the municipality have sold ice three months ago. So I'm just wondering where we are with selling ice.
We haven't sold ice for this coming season. Again, that's one of the commitments we made to the ice, ice user groups. So by the end of this week, we're planning to put the applications out to all the user groups to book their ice. But we commit to them that we won't book any ice for the upcoming season until we all have that equal opportunity to request ice through the ice allocation process. Again, that's that commitment that we made to the ice user groups to allow them to have fair access to it. So no, we have not sold any ice, ice yet, but we'll be getting on that right after this evening with council support.
I guess what I'm saying there is that if we're chasing ice, our users, if we want to sell ice, do we want to be this late behind other rinks for trying to sell it? Because do other people, you know, will they get organized earlier at another rink, say? So I don't know what that, what that impact would be on us selling our ice as we go forward. So I'll just make that comment because, and I don't know if we should be selling earlier. But if we want to get all of our ice sold and we don't want to have all those little bits and pieces of it left over. Maybe we need to start earlier. I, I don't, like I said, I don't know when everyone else is. But I know some of the rinks out of the municipality have already sold ice time.
Just build, just building on that, Counselor, for a second. What, what percentage of your primetime ice, Tim, goes unsold?
Right now, it's, it's about thirteen to fifteen percent of that ice gets unsold every year.
Thank you. I think it was so, first of all, I need, I need a motion to suspend our procedural biological pass ten o'clock, please. So moved by Counselor Hickey, seconded by not Counselor Sullivan, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Anyone contrary minded? We only have two quick letters after, sorry. Contrary minded, our Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Merrithew, and Counselor Sullivan. So is that four to three? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you. But message received. Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. I think you had a couple of comments.
Thank you, Worship. I'm not, I'm not real enthusiastic about this whole thing. I mean, I personally don't think we should be in the ice business. I, I've talked to businessmen that, you know, are totally on board with helping us out. People that will manage the rinks and take this completely off our, off our plate. And I think that I agree with Counselor Armstrong, that's where we should be. We're at a point now where, you know, I mean, we pretty much have to move forward with this. So I'm going to support it reluctantly. But I will say, I'm glad to see that the seniors are being supported in this as well as you. I just think that, you know, we're into, we're into something that's a liability. And as you stated, Tim, we're not, we're not managing this like a business. We're not selling ice time to try to pay the, the costs of delivering the ice time. You know, and, and I think that if we did that, we would still sell ice time to other user groups. You know, I mean, it's just that they treat places, the people that pay the most at the primetime. You know, but if you can't pay for primetime, maybe you play at eight o'clock and eat me, nine o'clock. Anyway, I just think that, I know I'm going to be cut off here in a minute, so. I, I just think that we're in this and we shouldn't be in it. I'll support it for this year. But I really think we should sit down with that business group and, and start looking at other models.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Counselor. Just a couple of quick comments for me. First of all, I'll start with the same comment that Counselor Sullivan made. Tim, I think to you and the Commissioner, I can't think of a tougher file. I mean, this, you know, ice and recreation, and you've gone and come to some of those meetings. And everybody wants the other person to pay and, you know, it's a tough, tough mission. And we've put you in that room, Tim, time and time and time again. I couldn't, I couldn't thank you enough. I mean, you're the traffic guy, you're the ice arena guy, you're the ball field guy. And I'm pretty sure I drove by Memorial Park last week and I saw you out there raking, raking, raking the dirt. So, you know, thank you. Thank you for everything you do. It's, sometimes it's thankless, not sometimes, probably most times, but thank you. Just very quickly, I know we're going to get into, you know, a bunch of debate. We're going to hear tomorrow. And, but last year, just in arenas alone, we had one million six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in costs. We had six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in, in user cost recovery. So we subsidized to the tune of nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So maybe our costs have come down a little bit. We're going to get our user fees up a little bit, and we're still going to subsidize somewhere in the range of nine hundred thousand plus dollars. So it's heavily, heavily subsidized. Our total subsidization in arenas and forestry and Rockwood Park and, and the Aquatic Center. When you add it all up is just under ten million dollars a year. So someday, we're going to get at that. And we're going to, the finance committee and others are going to take a look at subsidization. Please, city manager, let's add that, you know, to the, to the list and get that on the agenda. To have a look at subsidization overall and really peel it back and really look at it. And, and see eyes open what we're subsidizing and, and how we want to move forward. And lastly, I, I do also, I also do support a look at privatization, a change of how we do business of our rinks and everything else. But it should be number one in our twenty twenty-one work plan. We've got a lot more restructuring, a lot more work to do here in twenty twenty. But it also has to be open and transparent in a complete review. So eyes open, whether it's arenas or anything else that we're looking at. It's got to be data-driven and eyes open. And, and then I guess the last piece on, I am, I think it's, it's the right decision, city manager, to take one more kick at this as a region on arenas. That could lead to a look at how we might deliver fire service and police service. And so I do really thank you for, for that recommendation to go back to the table one more time on the arenas piece. So those would be my comments. Thank you. Please wrap us up, city manager, and then we'll, we'll have a vote.
Worship, I seem to be working in two, tonight, two quick, two quick points. First of all, I've mentioned this before, and to Counselor Armstrong and Counselor McKenzie's points. We have committed to undertake a review sometime in twenty twenty-one, probably the latter part of twenty twenty-one. To look at different operating models for the provision of arena services to the city of St. John. Privatization is one of them. There are other models we need to look at as well. But that is an exhaustive review. It's going to take a lot of time and staff effort. And again, a lot of stakeholder engagement. So this is why intentionally it could not be done this year. It is still on our work plan for the latter part of twenty twenty-one. And on the regional ice strategy, we will be reapproaching our regional neighbors to see if there's any possibility to pursue that. But again, that will be for a twenty twenty-one season. There is just no way to get there from here for this current season. And that's why we, we've come in with this interim approach for you. Again, I, I have to say it, our rates, even our new rates, although nobody likes to see increases. Our rates are not, I'll use a scientific term again, significantly out of whack with what other municipalities are charging. And therefore, the staff recommendation that you see before you this evening was based on that premise as well. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentations, the questions on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All those in floor, all those in favor, excuse me? Thank you. And those contrary minded, any contrary minded? Not seeing any, the motion's carried. Thank you. Next item?
Your worship, next item is fifteen point one. It's a letter from St. John Cycling and Coastal Trailings requesting to present to council.
A recommendation is refer to the clerk for scheduling. Do I have a mover? Deputy move, seconded by Counselor Hickey. Thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary minded. Thank you. Next item?
Fifteen two is a citizen petition to people from Fire Station Eight in Millville.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by the Deputy, seconded by Counselor Hickey. Thank you on the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Not seeing any motions carried. Next item?
Seventeen one is a recommendation from committee of the whole to establish a city manager performance review committee and appoint the mayor, deputy mayor, and Counselor Sullivan to the committee.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Hickey. Thank you. And a seconder. Thank you by Counselor Riordan. Thank you. On the question, sorry, that's not a question, David. Thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Motion is carried. Thank you. And final item?
Final item seventeen two, recommendation from committee of the whole to approve the hiring of a strategic advisor for the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you, Deputy, seconded by Counselor Merrithew. And just to clarity to the community, this is not an additional staff member. It's my, my former executive assistant or strategic advisor left. This is a replacement staff person and the mayor's office will end the year on or below budget. So, okay, thank you. The recommendation is on the floor. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Motion is carried. Thank you. A motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Hickey. Thank you very much, everyone. Tremendous amount of information there tonight. Thank you to staff. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Not seeing anyone. Thank you. Have a great night.